Okay.
What's Kim?
No.
I see.
Down at the rest resource, like the community.
You ready? Um, okay. Wait, where's my?
So I need to drag.
Call the meeting to order. Um, stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I'm standing.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with whose
Earthy and justice for all.
I didn't hear.
Um, Sandy, roll call.
I didn't hear anything.
Councilmember Stacy Green.
President.
Councilmember Kim Green.
Here.
Councilmember Bob Hall.
Here.
Councilmember Ken Palfini.
I am here.
And Mayor Susan Tavallaro.
I'm here. Um, so, thank you, Sandy. At this point, we are going to have anything that's not on the public comment, anything that is not on the agenda. If any of the public has a comment for the hearing, they have to do it now. Or correct?
Sure.
Yes. Do we have any public out there, Jeremy?
Yes. Where's my face?
Oh, look, you have public there.
Hi, guys.
Hi, Elizabeth.
Well, um.
Name and, name and address.
Elizabeth Tabard, 242 Main Street. I just wanted to say that, um, you know, 420 was interesting this year. COVID and the whole nine yards. It was, it was, uh, we have to do, you know, best safe practices and whatnot. We had some people come, uh, some new people come because they were excited that they never got to walk into a 420 before because they're usually at work. Um, so that was kind of fun. But we did do our swag bags this year, and I'm waiting for us to have a regular meeting with all of us together because every year, as you know, any of the swag bags that we sell at our event, I donate that money back to the city. So we'll present that when, uh, when we can all meet in person again. But I just haven't seen everybody, so I wanted to say hi and just let you know that we're doing the best we can through the COVID and, uh, you know, we're short-staffed and, and it's just been really crazy for us. But we're just trying to hang in here and just report in that we appreciate that, you know, we've been able to still have traffic on Main Street and look like we're not completely a ghost town.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you have? How many people, Elizabeth, how many people did you have on 420? A percentage from compared to last year?
Oh.
Bad question.
Yeah. Maybe 10%?
Oh, okay. All right, well, that's too bad. Thank you. Um, that was it for the public, Jeremy? Okay, and Jeff's here for the hearing, right? You don't have anybody else there with you, Kim?
No, I'm gonna do this. Oh, sorry.
Who?
Terry Chan.
Oh, and do they, would they like to say anything during a public comment?
Hello? Yes, um.
Yeah, how do I make a public comment here, guys?
All right, well, stand by. Let's, uh, let's let Terry go first.
Oh, I need, uh, Ms. Chan, I need your name and address.
Well, um, my name is Terry Chan, and I'm, um, joining the meeting from Canada.
Oh. Did you have any comments that you would like to make?
Uh, not, not really. I just want to, uh, you know, uh, attend a meeting at this point.
Oh, okay, good, welcome.
Hello?
Is that it? Yep. Was it Shane? Was Shane the one that wanted to say? I thought I heard Shane's voice.
I believe I'm here. Can you guys hear me?
We can hear you if you can't see you.
Okay, is that all right? Can that work, um?
Yeah.
Awesome. Is tonight, um, uh, are we talking about probation passes? I'm, I'm just now getting in, so.
Um, yes, we are Shane, but it's on the agenda. And so this is just public comment for things that aren't on the agenda. Is that what you wanted to talk about?
Yes, I would actually.
Okay.
Just wanted to give an update on Lemurian. Um, we have been working with a group for quite some time, Apex Extraction. They are coming up to put in a proposal to do a little extract on the facilities. Got some good news just with our group. We're gonna partner up with them a little bit. And, um, also working on our retail delivery application. So that should be finished up shortly as well.
Okay.
But, uh, that's about all I have to add, and thanks for your guys' time tonight.
All right, are you going to still be here when we talk about the resolution?
Hundred percent, yeah.
Okay, okay, thanks. All right, anybody else, Jeremy?
Anyone that has joined the public side of the call? Do you think folks from the strike go first?
Okay. All right, then we will move on to, uh, council member announcements, meeting reports, and comments. Kim, would you like to go first?
Sure. So I got, um, a, an email from the step office, and as you guys probably have already heard, you know, they're going away at the end of June. But they are committed to helping our employers and employees in Siskiyou County through this COVID. So they actually have a business recovery survey that they'd like any businesses to take. So if, and it, it's just, it's a very quick survey. So, uh, if, if you own a business, contact the step office and get, have them send you the link to the survey. It's a Survey Monkey, and their phone number is 938-3231.
Okay, is that it? Thank you. Bob, do you have anything?
No, I don't, Sue.
Thank you. Ken?
Well, of course. Always got my nose to somewhere. Uh, I, just, uh, the other day, I went to a Siskiyou Revitalization Network meeting where we did an instructional audio on how to create, an instructional video on how to create an audio tour. In other words, kind of, I don't know if anybody's been on the Modoc Tour of the, uh, the Modoc War Tour up in Klamath Falls, where it takes you through all the sites of the Modoc War. Very, very well put together. So one of the main people, uh, Megan Peterson, is one of the orchestrators of that project, and she gave us a tutorial on how to come up with subject matter and once you come up with the subject matter, all the elements that go into telling a story. There were things such as, um, we're looking to develop stories that involve several communities. So topics have ranged from volcanic geological tours, uh, Mount Shasta Railroad his, uh, no, railroad history and development around the county tours, a floating river tour, any with landmarks, things, things that actually go, at least involve several communities to develop economic dollars and actually community building in itself. Very interesting topics, for me, anyway. Uh, I also attended a Siskiyou Community Resource Collaborative Meeting with, and we, this is, uh, the Resource Centers from Weed, Dunsborough, Mount Shasta, Montague, and Wairika. And we just added, uh, Scott Valley, uh, to our list of members. And I also wanted to make sure that everybody is aware that, uh, the census is coming up, is on us. We need to complete it. Siskiyou County is prob, without doing the census properly, we're possibly losing $12 million per year that goes into county programs to help people. So, uh, I think, Sue, you're well aware of it, maybe you can speak to it as well. But, um, that's all I got for today.
They spoke at our Rotary Zoom meeting a couple of weeks ago and talked about that. Um, Bob, do you have anything?
No, no, thanks. I thought you asked me once.
I did. Stacy?
I did, yeah, I have a few consumer questions about the census form. I'm seeing so much information, and I'm surprised and discouraged that we haven't filled it. I filled it out the first day. I've still getting emails and mails and people asking for it, but it's very disturbing to see that we have a low response. I only hope that people are watching or listening or here can follow through with that. That's money that's, that's due to us, and, and it just takes a quick five, 10 minutes to fill out the form. I'm, I'm so disturbed to see that we're at 15% as a, as a, as a county, I think.
Oh, as a county. Our city was higher than that.
Thirty-five, it's something in 35, do you know?
We were at like.
The city of Weed is about over 40%.
Forty-two, forty-five.
Yeah, it's still low.
There's a contest going on.
Yeah, I don't understand why people, it's money for a city.
I could win $49.
Wow.
I know.
I hope you get it.
I would really like the people in Weed to fill that out so I could.
Please do, I'm telling all my people I know, please. That's the first thing. Then other things are just people are wondering how were we opening? We talked about that internally, and they're wondering how we're going to be consistent with the county, with the state. And of course, all the information we're getting is that we're following the guidelines from the governor to the Siskiyou County Office and their, and their restrictions. And people are just wondering if we're gonna be okay. I said, I think we will, we're following the rules. That's the most of conversations I had with people in the community. They're wondering how we're gonna do it, when we're gonna open it, and what day and what time. It's all, it's all depending on the businesses. If they feel comfortable, as what our city manager has said, you know, we're falling, but we're not gonna police it, and I'm glad to hear that, too, so we're not gonna be a marshal city. To a point, because I don't want to be marshaled or police chief. Thanks, Eric, that's all.
Is that it?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I've had Zoom meetings, one with Representative Dolly that was a rep, there were representatives from all, in his district, so it's pretty much north of Sacramento North, and talking about opening, and hopefully they get that moving. Um, I had a transportation meeting on Tuesday, and I know that the stage is now running certain routes. I believe there's only three or five routes, but they are free. They're using the money that they were using for the college kids so people can ride for free and get ahold of them to find out which routes we're going. And I know that the north to south, like Dunsborough to Wairika route, was going back and forth. And I believe that it was going out to, uh, Scott Valley and in. And then I have another meeting with Mrs. Dolly on Tuesday, another Zoom meeting. And that's all I've got. Okay, we will me, move to the hearing with notice to abate. Um.
Sue?
Yes.
Can I say something before we move on? We were talking about the census. Has the, has the city put out any directive at all or any information asking, you know, the, reminding people the importance of, of the census?
I put it in my letters.
Uh-huh.
Um, it's all over Facebook.
Okay.
I don't, there's posters. I'm not real sure how to get it out to people.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's all kinds of mailings.
Right. Mayor Tavallaro, is it possible we could put it in the water bill? Uh, maybe, uh?
I will try my best.
Although, or maybe on the water bill page where people pay?
Yes.
We can do that?
Um, they're gonna try to do that. Emily's gonna try to get that done.
Good.
She's gonna try her best.
And if, actually, I would also suggest all council members on your Facebook pages, if you do participate in that, that, uh, I can email you some information with the census stuff. Uh, maybe you could, uh, post that on your, uh, Facebook pages. I'll, I'll get it to all of you guys.
Ken, I did that on my, my email, as you guys know, I'm on Facebook like forever. But if you have something that's more restrictive or more concise, I just mailed what they did out as a public mailer. So if it's something more than that, then I'd love to help that. I'd love to have it anyway, it's more information, so feel free.
Yeah, actually, I was just, whatever I post on Facebook is made for quick reading. It's, Facebook is not meant for a lengthy conversation.
It's just social media, so that will work.
Yeah.
Because everyone's getting their personal mailers, so they are getting at their mailing information, whether they have a sign. So that would be good to have extra, I'd love to have it, too, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Ken. Um, all right, we are going to open the public hearing. First, we will have a staff report.
I'm John Pemberton, the City Building Inspector, and this is concerning the Juarez-owned buildings on Main Street in Weed. And as of today, virtually nothing has been accomplished on these buildings in terms of any repair, replacement, any type of work at all. There's been no attempt to get a permit, there's been no attempt to provide plans, there's been virtually nothing. Yesterday, Mr. Juarez's attorney, excuse me, Jeff Swanson, sent a letter to the city of Weed asking for an extension. And, uh, in my opinion, we've given Mr. Juarez plenty of time to do something. So I believe the extension was not granted, and, uh, there's so many different items that we could talk about. On, uh, April 6th, I received an email purportedly from Mr. Juarez. However, it was obvious it actually wasn't written by Mr. Juarez, detailing his plans for these buildings. And not only plans, but what had already been accomplished. Well, basically, in this email, it said that Chuck Schlumberger, one of the local engineers, had been in the buildings and said the buildings and the balconies were safe. Well, that's untrue, because I spoke with Chuck Schlumberger later that same day, and he said, not only did he not say that, he said the exact opposite. He said that, in his estimation, each building would require at least $300,000 in repair. Uh, also, in the email that I received on the 6th of April, there's mention that windows were ordered from Anderson Glass concerning fixing the windows on the Black Butte. Well, that's kind of remarkable, because I spoke with Anderson Glass, and no windows have been ordered. And I spoke with Anderson Glass today, and no windows have been ordered. So, again, another lie. Let's see here. Also, in the letter yesterday that we received from the attorney, there was mention that Mr. Juarez was unable to find engineers to come to the job site to do a site inspection, which is remarkable, because I found three engineers today calling from my office that said they had been available and working during the COVID crisis, and they see no problem. They will not work for Mr. Juarez, but if anybody called and wanted them to investigate a commercial building, they would do that. So again, another lie. The buildings have been recently supposedly listed with a realtor. However, there's an issue with that, because this Pam Lee that is listed on the sign is not a broker. She is just a agent, and in effect, if this is what they're doing, that's actually illegal. So, so again, a lot of information that, again, nothing is going to happen to these buildings until we force something to happen.
John, could, could you address the public safety aspect of the porches and the porch and the decks?
Oh, the, the balconies are still falling apart. In fact, I just looked at them a couple of days ago, and I think there's more pieces that have fallen off of them. Uh, the back deck is, there's no stairway off the back deck. Roughly 10 to 12 feet off the ground, no stairway. It's just, you could fall, just as simple as that.
A door.
The railing on the back deck is, and this is on the Florista Building, the railing on the back deck is, you know, a kid could knock it over. So these buildings are in horrible safety condition.
Why are the, why are the balconies considered public safety issue at 219 and 259? What's wrong with the balconies?
Well, if something falls off of them and hits somebody, that's a public safety issue.
Are they failing structurally?
Oh, yes, yes. There are broken bolts, there are rotten wooden beams, uh, bolts that are missing to hold the beams onto the steel columns. They're, they're just a mess.
Thank you.
And I, I will add that John and I did a little bit of research a couple of weeks ago on buildings of this nature, and just over the past couple of years in small towns about the size of Weed. And some of these have, have failed and caused a great deal of damage. And, uh, actually, there was a couple of cases where, uh, one person was killed, uh, one person, I think it was a, a toddler. I mean, uh, and, and these buildings probably about the same age as these buildings as well. So it becomes not only just a nuisance, but it also becomes a, a major safety issue, too, especially when you have balconies hanging over the sidewalks where people are gonna be walking up and down, so.
Yes.
It's actually to our chief of police. Have you, from your perspective or staff, have heard anything from citizens or yourselves as observing these buildings as far as safety and protection?
Oh, yeah, the structurally and both with people staying there and the structure of the building, it's, it's an ongoing public nuisance, it's been going on since August of 2018.
Are there still people in it to this day?
No, to our knowledge, the people have stopped. We did have an individual that was living, the last individual that we were aware of living inside of the, uh, Black Butte building. We did have a problem where he had moved out to a trailer, which is also illegal. The trailer is unregistered, and we have a municipal code against staying in a trailer outside of an RV park in the city. So that became an issue once he moved out of the Black Butte. So that is an ongoing problem.
But all the humans are out.
Humans are out, to our knowledge. We haven't had any reports of people going in or out. The building department did have to, as you'll notice, the board in the front of the Black Butte now, the window was removed, which caused a structural issue, and that's why nothing further has been done on that, because it's actually, the window isn't just a window, it actually supports the front of the building, and that was removed without consulting an engineer or contractor.
There's a steel support in the corner of that window that was removed, and that steel support is holding up part of that corner of the entire second floor, so.
Sounds like a problem.
Yeah.
The Black Butte is broken with the wood piece behind it, I see, I've seen that.
There's several of those.
There's multiple windows in the second story that are broken.
Right, it's on the second story.
Concern with the front window that was, uh, supporting the steel beam, the last time we were in the, the Black Butte, there was a six-inch swale from the center to the outside wall that seems to be getting worse, and then there's also a slope now developing towards the back. So now that that piece is even gone, it could potentially be even worse.
And John, just from a building perspective, with that broken glass, doesn't that have less weight on the glass to hold itself so it can break easier being broken already?
Oh, sure, there's, there's less tension, less integrity.
Knows something, yeah.
Yes. We've had two different, very experienced contractors that I know just basically do walkbys for free, and they are of the same opinion that I am, that the perimeter foundation of the Black Butte is sinking, so that's what's causing the swale that Justin just mentioned.
John, for the record, when did you make your inspections?
Well, Bob, I have so many different dates, uh, I, I, I'd, I'd have to go through all the dates. I mean, I have everything.
Over, over the last 90 days, for example?
The last 90 days, I know we made, uh, inspections in January, February, and March. I'd have to get the dates out to look, but.
So going back about five months now, then?
Oh, yeah, I, the initial posting of the building was November 7th, so that I know.
You inspected for the balcony and the condition of the deck at that time?
No, what, when we posted that building, when I posted that building on November 7th, that was for the building's parapet and also the overall condition of the building. And then, I believe on December 6th, I posted the Black Butte because of the same thing, condition of the building. And I believe it was in mid-January that I posted for the balconies, because the balconies are, at this point, I don't believe the balconies are repairable, because if you take the balconies off to repair them, I'm concerned that the front of the building might basically end up on the sidewalk.
I see, thank you.
As Tim mentioned, from what the research that he and I did.
Very good, thank you.
Could I ask a question?
Yes.
This is Ken Palfini.
Hey, Ken.
Yes.
Based upon your inspections and prior building inspector inspections, do we have those all fairly well logged? Because we've been look, worked on this since probably mid-2017. I think the public is wary. Mark is either unwilling or incapable of moving this, any kind of project forward, as far as I can see it. And we can banter this conversation over and over again, but there's nobody that's gonna be willing to work for this gentleman that I can, based upon what I'm hearing. I don't think it's giving us any options but other than to put these in receivership. And although I worry about the expense, uh, is it, is it, am I right? Is that the only way we're gonna get these things fixed is if we take them out of his hands?
That, I would assume that, too. Yeah, I would assume that these buildings will, will not get fixed unless he does not own them, because he's had ample time over the last 18 years to do some sort of repair, and he's done virtually nothing. I agree.
Um, Kim and Bob, do you have any ques, other questions for John? No? Anybody? Okay. Did you say that Chuck Schlumberger came out and looked at him?
Yes.
Did not do a written report, though?
Uh, you would have asked Mr. Juarez about that, yeah.
But you talked to Chuck and Chuck did say he came out?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. All right. The testimony of interested parties. Mr. Juarez, I don't, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't know what your name is. Oh, okay, hi, Jeff.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
I can, do we get to see you?
Um, my camera's on.
There you are.
You should, there we go. Then I promptly muted myself, so.
We can hear you, you're good.
You can, now you can hear and see me? Oh, yeah, I see myself, okay. Um, thank you. My, my first, um, request is that I reiterate what I asked in my letter of May 13th, asking for an additional 60 days. I heard Mr. Pemberton's comment, and, and I think that, um, he's actually identified what is a, a pretty serious problem. He spoke with three engineers, all of whom told him they would not work for Mr. Juarez. So it seems their availability is not any assistance, because they won't work for the guy. Um, we have had to go out of the area and identify people, um, in the Bay Area who are engineers. And as you know or may know, the, the, uh, concerns that people have in the Bay Area are dramatically different than we're experiencing in Shasta or Siskiyou County with respect to the COVID-19 concern. We have identified an engineer, but getting him up here has been the problem, because nobody's willing to, to travel. You know, I noted that Siskiyou County had imposed restrictions on people who were coming to stay in, uh, second homes in Siskiyou County and asking them to lock down and quarantine for 14 days. And I'm also aware that people in the Bay Area, including the engineers that we've spoken with, have been really reluctant to drive up here during this pandemic. It's only been in the last week that, uh, things are opening up a little bit from Governor Newsom's orders. So the reason the engineer is necessary is because Mr. Pemberton has basically said that he won't issue any kind of building permit without an engineer's report behind the request. And so we're in a bit of a catch-22. We can't go out and complete work without an engineer's report, and we are truly trying to get an engineer to come up and report. The local engineers, for whatever reason, will not work on this job, and that's consistent with what Mr. Pemberton just told you. With respect to the concerns to the public, um, I'll, I'll make a couple of points there. One is, I believe the sidewalks are closed. I haven't been to Weed lately, but the last time that I was there, no one, that, those areas are taped off, and no one should be using those sidewalks in front of the buildings as a public passage. So I think that that reduces the, uh, So I think that that reduces the hazard to the safety of the public somewhat. With respect to the building at 247 Main Street, the balcony at issue is at the rear of the building and is not accessible by the public. The absence of stairs maybe even helps keep somebody who jumped in the back of that building from going up there, and there's no occupants in that building. So to complain that that represents a threat to the public, I think when the building is not occupied and the balcony is not accessible, seems to be, I understand its concern, but it doesn't seem to be warranted in that particular circumstance. My client was attempting to fix some of the issues, for example, the glass, and I think Mr. Pemberton mentioned that. And he issued a stop-work notice and red-tagged the building, directing my client that no one can work on the buildings under penalty of arrest. He posted the stop-work notice, threatened monetary fines and/or imprisonment. And the basis for it was that he said that there was structural material removed in the front corner of the Black Butte that provides bracing to the second-story floor system. And that's consistent with what he just told you. I asked my client to bring the piece of metal that he's talking about, and if someone would show it to you. If it's holding up the entire second floor, and it's approximately a two-inch square piece of metal that came out when they removed the windows, did not have to be unscrewed or cut out with a saw or anything else that you might think would be required to remove a structural member. You know, it's pretty clear that the piece of metal that was removed is not structural. And that removal, which was, we were trying to replace the glass, which he had been instructed to do in one of his notices to abate, and then that's what led to the stop-work orders, the red-tagging. And that happened, I think, on March 13th. The governor's order went into effect on March 23rd. So, you know, like I said, I think it's a bit of a catch-22 for my client here. I get it. I get that you're frustrated with his process, but I know that he's been in contact with these engineers. I know he's trying to get somebody up here. He can't do any of the work without an engineer standing, without even having a report before he applies for a permit. The other thing, I think there may have been an oversight on the city, and I've been trying to confirm this, but I'll just raise the issue since we're limited to what I raised. And that is, we did not, I believe, receive a copy of the abatement order for 247 Main Street. I don't have the same complaint about the other two abatement orders. I'll note that the copies provided by Mr. Winston, at least at the 247, was unsigned. And I, my client did not provide me with a copy of that abatement order and has not been able to produce it for me. Last time I was there, I think I mentioned, my client is entitled to know what he's being ordered to repair, and he should be given the opportunity to complete the work. I know you doubt his commitment, but he spends quite a bit of time trying to.
Mr. Swanson, I have a question. When was, what month were you here? January or February? January?
It was in February.
February?
It might have been. It might have been February.
Okay. Thank you, keep going.
Okay. He spends quite a bit of time trying to get people to provide the engineering analysis and the report that Mr. Pemberton has requested. And what we're, what we're asking for is, because of this COVID shutdown, which has absolutely interfered with his ability to get somebody up here, just that he's being given an additional 60 days. And with that, I'll turn this over to Mr. Juarez, and I thank you for your courtesy and your consideration.
So, Ms. Mayor?
Yes, Mrs. Green.
May I comment? So, just listening to what he just said, two different days, I drove down Main Street in the last month, I'd say it was, and there was a person standing at the door where you go upstairs above the old Florista, talking to somebody inside the door. So that means that people did have access to those back stairs because they were upstairs.
Oh.
Ms. Mayor, I might add, I actually called the police when I saw, I was with a friend at the animal hospital. We saw someone go in the building. The police quickly came, but they weren't identified for anybody going in the building. But unless my eyes were tricking me, I know what I saw. So I saw a similar activity to Ms. Green with the Eset.
Well, I don't believe that the building is occupied, I think was the point that I made.
The building is not occupied. Two, we have a person twice a day checking the building for security purposes.
Are they going into the building and checking, or just from the outside?
If they feel that there's any concerns inside, they will check inside. That was instructed. We want to make certain no one's living inside.
So there's no record of you knowing if they're entering the building or not, is that correct?
They're keeping records if, on a daily basis of their going there twice a day. We asked it to be inconsistent times so patterns weren't being formed.
So can I ask you, has there been interest to the building that you've been notified of by that process you just mentioned?
The building's been broken into, yes.
It has been?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for that.
Okay, go.
Also, I would like to. I would like to add, could I add one more thing, Sue, before he starts, Ms. Mayor?
Sure.
Jeff has complained that he doesn't have notice to send an engineer up, yet we've been discussing this issue for a couple of years. I understand there's an issue potentially now, although I think he could have hired a local engineer if he wouldn't have just kind of horn-swaggled everybody in the community. Tony, I just wanted to put that on record that he's complaining now about not having things, but he's had more than adequate time to address all of these issues. And he just continues to push things forward and forward and forward. And in two more months, we will see even more disrepair and more potential cost to the city if we do need to take these over.
Thank you, Ken. I have some questions to ask Mr. Swanson. Are you still there?
Yes, I am.
Okay. You mentioned that it is taped off on the sidewalk, and I want to assure you how lovely we think that that is, that it's been like that for six months. Because now I've been to your downtown, which is where your office is, right?
No, I'm actually, I have the great fortune of being on the river.
Ah, okay. And there's construction going on down there, and they're moving along with the construction, so we don't see, I haven't seen tape on a building for six months in ready. So you might not know how much we like it. And then you were here in February, which would have been the second week of February, and this whole COVID stuff really started on my birthday, so believe me, I remember what day it was, on March 16th. Well, so there were still five weeks to have gotten a, an engineer, and then I thought that Mr. Schlumberger said he came out to the building, and he is an engineer. And it was prior to the, March 16th, the beloved day. So anyway, that's what, my only question to you, there was that amount of time.
Yeah, and I think that, I don't know the circumstances, I believe Mr. Schlumberger was, was getting involved with the project and then for whatever reason decided not to.
Oh, February 13th that we had our meeting, that he was here. Yeah, that you were here on February 13th. So, yeah.
Ms. Mayor, some comments to Jeff, the attorney, and Stacy Green and myself, sir. Two things that I observed by your comments, you mentioned about the sidewalks availability to people walking, that if they're not falling or not in disrepair, there's no danger. I disagree with that. If one bolt comes loose or a strong wind comes, they will fall, and they can move, not fall right under, they can move where they're falling. As far as the back stairs, the back in the back, you talk about no stairs being there. If that falls, no one has to be under it. It can move by the wind. It doesn't have to be right under the structure for it to fall. So I disagree with your two observance of that. There could be danger with things falling and moving as they fall. And that's all, just observance. Did you hear me?
Yeah, you can hear us.
I did, and I appreciate your comments. I think that, and I think that's why Mr. Pemberton has asked for an engineering report because until somebody actually gets in there, we are just speculating as to what might happen.
And my point is, we asked for an engineering report in January, and then you were here in February. And so there was a six-week time period in that an engineer could have come. I, you know, there's, that's, there was time before this whole COVID thing, so.
And Jeff, I've been on the council for seven years. I've heard the same response about getting an engineer. I don't think it takes seven years, and if you can get him, you can get him, and I believe there's always a way. So I disagree with that observance, too.
Okay. Okay. Nobody else has any questions for Mr. Swanson? All right. Mr. Juarez, go. What are you going to tell us?
It's our effort to try to make it right. We're.
Go ahead.
We've, we're looking to hire what we believe is to be the very best engineer, architects, developers, to fix the property. I think it's the goal of all of us to improve the downtown and to make it good. It would be a shame if those buildings came down. They're historical, probably the most historically significant buildings within the town, and we're trying to save them, and we're doing every effort we can. We've put together a team, Gary will speak on it, our effort is to make it good. We want to work with the city, not against the city. The things that are being, I mean, being accused of, I could easily argue all of them. I don't know if there's any benefit in that. We certainly showed you that the metal structure piece that was coming down, that wasn't a valid argument, as many of the other things that are being said are not valid. And all we want to do is fix the buildings and make it safe and viable for everybody. It's as much my benefit as it is that of the city, and that's all we want. We can't do that if we're being constantly fought, if we're given, I was told if I did any work to the building, I would be arrested. Yet, I'm also being accused of not doing any work to the building. It's a catch-22, as Mr. Swanson had said, and we're working diligently to try to make it work. But none of us are going to succeed if we constantly fight. Fighting, nobody wins. If we work together, we can all win, and that's all I'm asking. And the comments you're saying are really inaccurate. You're turning your head, it's really unprofessional, I think, the way you conduct yourselves.
I'm having deja vu here because we've heard this for three years. I haven't been on the council almost four years, and.
I have not. This is, I haven't been speaking here for three years, so that's not a true statement.
It was probably two years ago that you were here.
I don't think so.
Oh, I think so because I'd never actually seen you before until I got on the city council. So it's been two, three years, and this has been.
We're moving forward. We're moving forward, and we've put together a team. It's our goal to fix the building. We're simply asking that we work together with the city. We're not going to succeed if you constantly fight us.
Your behavior.
Ms. Mayor?
I'd like to say something, please. Just a moment. Talk not behavior, and me shaking my head, is in disbelief and frustration. My parents came here in 1946. I grew up here since 1966. I know what the town looks for and wants for. To say that we're not trying to work with you or being competitive or compatible, I don't believe that, sir. I respect your responses as a person, but your behavior as what has been asked for you has not, not happened. There's always an excuse, and I'm not okay for that. I'm franking up front, and I'm sorry that might make you feel uncomfortable.
Stacy, we want to.
Just a moment, let me finish a statement, then I can respond. I like for things to be done. I say, being here seven years, and I'm junior on the council. When I first came here, I was asking why this was not done, and I was told by my members that it won't be done. And seven years later, that's the same response I'm still receiving. So we can say a lot with our mouths, but what has our behavior shown? And our behavior has shown that there's nothing that's been positive for the city in making these businesses or buildings inhabitable or fixed. I have not seen that unless I'm seeing something different with my eyes, and that's all that I'm saying. So to say that our behavior or conversation is different and compatible with you, I don't believe that, sir.
Stacy, I want to make it right. Give me the ability to do it. We've put together a group of good engineers, architects, and other people that are necessary to make the building right. It's not just a matter of repairing the building. It's a matter of coming up with a good plan for the building, bringing in viable businesses, developing those buildings for those viable businesses. There's a process. We're trying to do it correctly.
Behavior, behavior. What's really been executed is what we have not seen done.
We're doing it.
Words and sentences and letters from different people saying it's going to be done.
Stacy, I got it.
Behavior has not changed it. What you got hasn't been done.
We're doing it.
Doing it is different. I have seen.
We're in the process. Allow us to show you what we're doing.
You keep asking that. Every time you come up, do something and make it believable. Let's see something different, something changed.
Okay.
Mayor Cavallaro, may I speak to Mr. Juarez?
Um, yes.
I'll try and keep it brief. Mark, for over three years, we have gradually encouraged you to do something with the buildings. We did not have any stop-work orders. We implored you to help us with the buildings. You come up with these long, grandiose schemes about fixing the buildings and putting in the proper tenants and all this, on and on and on. The simple part is, you have to start somewhere. You have failed to start until we have threatened abatement. I'm sorry that it's come to this. We would have rather had you fix the buildings three years ago or better because I remember having these conversations, as I'll repeat, in 2015. It is only of this short time period from January that we've started this abatement process, and we're still getting song and dance, so.
We are moving forward to make repairs.
Ms. Mayor?
Sure, Bob, go ahead.
Yes. Mark, how are you doing? It looks like you're pretty stressed out. Mark, you know, I've been working with you for, probably pretty cool, I don't know, I even had you over for dinner maybe eight, nine years ago, and we start, I started working with you, trying to help you manage. Matter of fact, at one point, obviously, I even told you that, hey, if you need somebody to manage to help get your, get things in order regarding your, the people that were living there. And I really, I hate to, it seems like I'm taking this personal, and I know I shouldn't, but, you know, the old, the classic runaround, I mean, we were falling farther, farther behind. We started this and we continued to, to, I continue to support you, I continue to give you time.
Bob, you're right, and I appreciate.
And we have not won. I can't say one thing, one way that we improved, Mark.
Bob, you're right, and I appreciate.
I can't believe that you're continuing the same, same, poor-me attitude when we've done everything we possibly could for you. I mean, I personally feel I've done everything. Would you, would you agree with that, or? You know, I haven't been a problem. I've tried to sit you in any way I could.
Bob, I appreciate.
You agree with that?
Bob, I agree. I appreciate the effort you made. We're putting together a team, let Gary Tonchak talk on this. We are putting together a team. We've identified engineer, architects, and other people that we believe can do the best job possible. They have expertise in these particular buildings, a lot of expertise. And that's what we're trying to do. We're not just trying to get them fixed, we're trying to do it right.
What? Oh, question. Why would we believe in you?
Tough to believe, I'm sorry.
I'm stepping out of this. I'm putting somebody else in charge of it.
I know, well, why would I believe that? The last time that, I did recall, the first time that I saw you, you were here with a gentleman, and you said that he was a party planner. And I asked you if he was a contractor or an engineer, and you said, no, 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 he was a, an event planner. That's what he was, an event planner. And I thought, well, I'm not real sure an event planner is what you need right now. And so that was the first year that I was on here, so that's been three years ago. And here we are now, having the same discussion. So my question to you is, why would I believe you? What, you've, in three years, you've done nothing.
We're asking you to give us 16 more days and let us show you what we can do.
Nah.
Well, you can, I guess you can show us, but I, go ahead. I'm not speaking for everybody.
I have. I would like to see, if you can post a bond for about a million dollars payable to the city of Weed that if that progress is not met in 60 days, that we get the funds. I don't know if that's legal. We'll have to ask our legal department, but I'd be willing to go with something of that nature. Just throwing it out there.
I like it.
I'll add a little bit here to the timeframe. I was able to go back digitally and find some information here.
I was able to go back digitally and find some information here. So just, these are just a few of the incidents that we've had, and these are located in, within a digital record. In 2013, Mr. Swanson is correct in that the windows were removed, and he was advised to stop work due to potential issues in not having licensed contractors on premises. Earlier that day, the building department did have to go down there prior to that because they had blocked off the street without an encroachment permit, not allowing any parking as they were removing those windows. That occurred the same day. Going back to March 10th, we contacted two individuals, Chris Toms and Mr. Manfredi, who advised that he was the property manager. They were doing construction at the time, neither were licensed contractors. Myself and I believe the building department, John Pemberton, were with me. And March 6th of 2020, that's when we had our first contact with Ms. Gay Taylor, who appeared at one of our council meetings, and then she removed herself from working for Mr. Juarez sometime after the council meeting, and we never heard from her again. In February of 2020, the building department was at 219 Main Street regarding possible electrical repairs, at which time an estimate of $40,000 was provided, I believe, give or take. In January, January 22nd of 2020, we contacted Chris Toms and Darren Campo, who were offloading building materials to build a retaining wall, either of whom are contractors, licensed contractors, to keep the parapet from falling over. So between the 22nd and the 14th, the parapet was removed by a licensed contractor. And going back to the safety of the balconies, I did speak with that contractor who removed that parapet. He required his employees to wear harnesses, not because they would fall off of the building, but because he was worried the balcony would collapse while they were removing the parapet. And then going back all the way, you know, Mr. Juarez did acknowledge repairs that were needed, that had been provided to him. I have an email of that from December 19th, 2019. He was CC'd on an email between himself and Mr. Pemberton regarding acknowledgement of certain repairs that need to be made. Going all the way back to February 20th of 2019, prior to Mr. Pemberton working here for the city of Weed, I have one, two, three, four pages that were provided by Aaron Goodman, who was the chief building official at that time. Four pages of repairs for the properties of 219, 221, 225, 247, the metal building behind 247 Main Street, 251 Main Street, 259, 261, and 265 Main Street. Those, these are all listed, and each one is itemized as to what needs to be done, all the way back in February of 2019.
I could comment on each of those, I don't want to get into a match, but, but many of the statements you said are not accurate. So...
Those, all my statements are documented in police reports, so if you would like to have those, you can come in and request those, and I will give you an incident report for each one of those, because every time I was there, it was documented.
Okay.
I also have other police reports available, if you would like those as well, for other incidents we've had.
Okay.
Also, we got together as a group on 2/19...
10:15, Mr. Juarez was there. We did an inspection on all the buildings, and I have 19 safety code violations documented right here, sent to you, and I don't think any of them have been fixed.
And that, that was February 2019?
Yes, at 10:15 a.m. So these are all life safety violations, and all the, and we inspected all the buildings as a group.
So we can't hear...
Oh, gee, they can't hear you.
Justin, you want to turn your mic off?
Yeah. Sorry, Kim.
Sorry about that. I said on 2/7/19 at 10:15 in the morning, we got together with the fire department, public health, police department, building inspector, Mr. Juarez. We walked all the buildings. I have it on record here on my tablet. We have over 19 cell, um, safety violations that have never been touched, to my knowledge. Not one, not one thing. And he has, he's got a copy of that, so.
Saying that those are inaccurate.
Yeah. Well, he didn't say...
He said those are...
He said, Justin.
I forwarded these to the building inspector Goodman, who actually probably put them in the report, and he said he was going to put them in the report as well. But, so...
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Yep. When he gets finished, I'd like to...
After him? Okay.
Hi, my name is Gary Tomchuck. I've been a friend of Mark for about, I guess, seven or eight years now. I know him from the Bay Area, where there may be a bit different opinion of, you've seen Mark, and there may be a bit different light. I, I don't know how much of you, you know about his experience with the Happy Company, when he was one of the fastest-growing companies during the dot-com boom, when he was making the Happy Massagers, turning that into a very, very successful company.
Excuse me. Max, what's your position or your relationship to this?
I have come in recently, in the last month, to work with Mark. I am going to be heading up the new team, as Mark has said he's bringing in a new team, as Mr. Pemberton has indicated, that the problem is that Mark may be incapable of, of creating such the, the changes that are needed. And Mark has recognized that he needs a different support system to make these changes happen.
Your purpose as a team leader, as an engineer, as consultant, I don't know your business perspective, please.
My, my background is primarily in developing businesses. I have written business plans and started new businesses for the past 27 years. I've raised significant funds through that, and Terry Chen, who is also on the, the video call, is one of the team members. We're bringing in, we've been interviewing it, and we've now selected and in, onboarding the right engineers and architects and developers to, and business development people to create and build a solid plan that we can be presenting. That's part of the reason we're also looking for the extension, so that we can create a plan that, it's not just about repairing the buildings, it's about how, what do you, what do you turn these buildings into? Because just doing the repairs doesn't necessarily get a tenant in. There's, there's been a problem with tenants in Weed for some time. And so, you know, that's really, there's a lot of issues here instead of just fixing the buildings. There's, how do we actually create viable businesses and create a thriving downtown? And so that's what, you know, my goal here is to really come onboard, ground this into operations. That's my, my role with most companies is a COO or CEO, and I come onboard and I start up companies and get them funded, get them going, stay for a few years, and then bring in the, the proper management team. I will be honest that running property management is, is not my forte, but my job is, is to build the business, bring in the right people. And that's, once we find the right, who the right tenants are, as we're going through building five-year financial plans, bringing in investors, bringing in all these kind of people, this is what's needed. This is what's, you know...
May I ask you one question?
Yeah.
With what you've heard with the timeframes and the impending danger of what's the buildings are in and this, and the areas around the buildings, what's your response to fixing that immediately? Because we're past the red zone, we're past the timeline. What's your immediate response to get those things taken care of, even though you just mentioned that repairs is not number one for you?
We've been in discussions with, with engineers. As, as was noted earlier, we need to bring an engineer in before we can get the building permit, so it's, it's been this catch 22 that's been mentioned several times now. And so once we have the engineers to really evaluate, rather than, to really look at the structures inside, because we're like, right now, a lot of what's being talked about, it, you know, and I've looked through at the buildings, and, you know, externally, as it sounds like, you know, most of these things have been observational more than actual forensic testing. We have the forensic engineer who is looking to come up here, and we're looking at probably about two weeks. We haven't scheduled a date certain yet, but that, we're, we're working, we should have that within the next day or two. And we have an architect who, both, and both of these people specialize in older buildings. There's, you know, we can show you examples of particularly the architect, the buildings he's done, that were in far worse conditions, buildings that the city was ready to tear down. They basically gave him the buildings and said, go ahead, and he's turned them into multimillion-dollar properties. And so this is what we're looking for, the time, is to create this opportunity, as well as, you know, bring the engineer up here, and if, if, you know, if they are in, in that dire need, yes, we will create the remedies. That's what we're looking for is, you know, but one of the keys, and, you know, as Mark was noting, I, I was watching the, the shaking heads and things like that. One of the keys to making this successful will be cooperation with the city. And so, and even there...
I know, I know. I, it's like, you're a party planner. I mean, we've already gone, if you were, if you had gone up there and said, I'm an engineer, I'm a contractor, and I'm going to go out there tomorrow and start hammering nails, I'd...
But we can't, because we have a stop work order. We can't do any of that. We can't even take the, the wood down to, to do the inspection at this point.
Because all you've done is talk. And I tell you, if one person is, is injured by that, someone will be accountable, and it won't be the city of Weed.
I totally understand that, and...
And I don't hear that, because you said, if the changes are notable, they've already said that, there's no if there. Our building inspector has spoken, we've had engineers come here, we've had our police department, we've had people of the city that, with responsible responsibilities, tell you that it's wrong, and yet you still say if. That's a bad word, sir. If is not the case, and it's, it is a problem right now, it's not if.
Okay.
So, so you're missing the precedence by presenting yourself on the first time you're coming for us, saying if there's a problem. I have a problem with that, because there's no if here. There's actual problems with the buildings that can hurt people in a minute. Not a day, not, not two days, not a week.
Ms. Mayor?
Mayor Cavallaro, may I speak for one second?
Um, yes, and then after you, Kim.
Okay. You want to go first, Kim?
Sure.
Go ahead.
Okay, so I like everything that this gentleman just said, but he should have said it 10 years ago.
Uh, thank you, that's pretty concise, I appreciate that, Kim. Again, here we are, we, we bring in a business planner, but not a project person, not an engineer, not somebody that does the hammers and nails. The catch 22 isn't a catch 22 for us, it's failing to do things in an orderly fashion. You want to develop a business plan before you reconstruct the building. I get part of that, except there are elements of that building that can be fixed, that do not need a business plan.
Absolutely.
The fact that finding a tenant is difficult in Weed, Mr. Juarez has held us hostage with those 10 miserable building, or actually, three miserable buildings for 10 years. Who would rent? Who would rent them? They're in total disrepair. Anybody that goes in there, there's no heat, there's leaking, there's sewage everywhere. So I don't know if it's the cart before the horse. It's, there is the cart before the horse somewhere.
And I agree, and that would be the plan, is to fix the buildings to a inhabitable state while the architect is, we're determining the, the proper use, and looking at how we can actually fill the buildings, and then the architect can build the plans to, to make that happen. And so, you know, that's, that's part of architectural design, is like, you can't just build, you know, and, and create a new piece. You know, we, we want to look at, you know, what do we need to do, you know, in, for example, this building in Galt, it was an old building, and it needed a structural support, as some has been stated here. And so they were able to build a modern architectural piece into the building, and actually, where the, that back stairway on 247 is located, is exactly a perfect place to put something like that, that would be, you know, a structural support, that would also be potentially a, you know, an addition instead of a detraction. So, you know, this is, this is where we're looking to go, is create the, the repairs. And to your point, Mr. Green, I, I did misspeak in saying if. There are, there are definite problems, and they do need to be corrected. And as soon as we can get out of this catch 22, we are looking to create that, those repairs.
Okay.
Who's going to finance these repairs?
Hold on. Our city manager would like to speak. Can you? Or they all want to say something? Are you still? All right, Kim.
Um, okay, so that now sounds well and good. You want to, you want to know what the business is that wants the space, so then you're going to do the repairs based on that business. Every one of those buildings has had more than one business in them already, and the reason they're empty is because he would not do anything to those buildings to keep those businesses in them. It, uh, he would try to hold the business owner hostage, and if you want my, if you need heat, you have to pay for it yourself. If you want this fixed, you're going to pay for it yourself. Why don't you say that you're going to rent this building for me, so that I can write the city a letter saying that I am doing stuff on my buildings? So there's a lot of little schemes and, I don't even know what else to call it, that, yeah, shenanigans, that you, I don't know your name, sir, that was up there, because I couldn't hear you. You don't, you don't know all the reading between the lines stuff that's gone on. And I think the fact that we've had, I don't know, two, three different lawyers, five or six different supposed real estate companies, the lady who was at our meeting in February, who, we told her, you're not going to last very long, and she was determined, nope, she was going to help him. By March, she was gone already. And every meeting, he brings somebody else to plead his case. And we're just, we're done.
Yeah.
You're the flavor of the month. Um, Bob?
Yes, sir, I didn't get your name, what was it?
My name is Gary Tomchuck.
Gary, Gary, my name's Bob. Gary, you know, we, there's, we want nothing more than for Mark to succeed. Believe me. I mean, we want him to succeed. And you're asking us for something that, 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 I mean, it's so much pie in the sky. You, you mentioned you have an architect. Who's your, who is the architect?
The architect is Michael Malinowski. He's based in Sacramento.
Okay. And who is the engineer?
His name is Dr. Farie Barthinger. He is, he's an engineer, general contractor, forensic engineer, and, and so he has got, as well as expert witness in terms of looking at older, older buildings, and actually, both of these gentlemen have, are certified as expert witnesses for looking at older buildings and how to create viable structures and businesses out of them.
And why haven't, why aren't they here?
Uh, they're not traveling because of the coronavirus, sir. That's why they're, they're, you know, we're looking at, particularly, Dr., Mr. Malinowski is caregiving for some people, and he is very cautious, that he said basically, once there's a, he, he will be, like, once there's, everything is open, he will take about two weeks or so to get up here.
Do they have a computer?
They, they can't do a building tour via a computer.
What's that? Sue?
They, until they actually do the building tour, I mean, it's, it's like, we can, we could bring them to say that we've engaged them, but that, that would be about all they could actually do from a legal standpoint.
He's waiting for everything to open up. It could be a couple of years.
I just want you, I want you to feel us, that we do want to help you. We want to help. Are we actually doing our, our duty by continuing this, this, what seems to be nonsense? It really does, it, you know, we're, I, I can't, I stress enough how, how much we really want Mark to succeed, but for, we, we've got to have something to go on, not just continue, the building becomes more and more dilapidated every, you know, every month, and without people in, in those, those buildings of that age, they're just going to fall apart. So, I hope you're misfeeling for us, too, you know, I mean, you, 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 we haven't done this. Mark's done this, but, thank you.
Ken, did you, were you done? Oh, go, go ahead.
No, I would like to say one thing, a couple of things. First, you mentioned all these people. We pointed the, the holes in your argument. Again, more pie in the sky with, with ways around it. We've been, I've been meeting since the coronavirus with hundreds of people with, yeah, it's not the most convenient, but it's possible. It's possible to get things done. It's possible for your engineer to subcontract to another engineer. There's lots of ways to get things... There's lots of ways to get things accomplished. I would like to know, if, if we're looking at a possible million dollars' worth of repairs, who's financing this little affair? Because it doesn't seem as if there's financing. Financing has never been mentioned, and that's not my, you know, probably not my area to inquire, but I got to also feel, it doesn't appear that the money's there. Otherwise, we'd have had other things done way before this. I'm done.
Thank you, Ken.
Mayor?
Yes.
Real quickly, Mr. Tomczak, I'm the new city manager. I've been here two, two months, so.
Welcome.
Yeah. And so, where's your office based out of?
I, until recently, was based out of Ventura County.
Okay, okay.
And I have just moved up here to work with Mark on these, this project.
Very good. Well, because of my experience, I, I've worked in three other communities that have had real vibrant downtowns. Old, Auburn, California, been there, Old Town, downtown, really beautiful place, and a couple other cities in Oklahoma that I manage as well, that had some really vibrant downtowns. And the way I look at this, I look at things with data and facts. It drives my wife crazy, but that's how I operate.
I'm an engineer in my degree, and so I, I'm very data-driven.
So, not knowing much about this coming into it, I did a little bit of research, and I did find an interesting article from the Mount Shasta News from 2008, 12 years ago, where they interviewed Mr. Juarez. And Mr. Juarez was given an interview about the buildings he bought in Dunsmere. Now, the way they did this interview, it was verbatim. The question was outlined, and his answer was outlined. They asked some specific questions about buildings that were blighted in Dunsmere, that he had purchased five years before, and how some of the folks in Dunsmere were very, very unhappy with him. I think the reporter said that, you know, he rode in on a white horse, and now he was the villain. And I understand he's, you know, done some work in Dunsmere, and he's had some stuff here. As a city manager, I also look at what we have retail-wise within our community, because that's extremely important. We, right here in Weed, we live and die by sales tax, TOT, and those things. And in order for us to have a vibrant downtown, we've gotta have a great working relationship with some of the business owners. And if you wanna have a business in Weed, you have to abide by our codes, our ordinances that are laid out. All of Mr. Juarez's neighbors are following those, that code and those ordinances. Now, to the T, maybe not, but, you know, if, if they're not, we send John over, and he takes care of it. And he's been working with Mr. Juarez. So, we have 4.79 square miles in this community, very small bandwidth that we have to work with here. And because that entire side of Main Street is pretty much inhabitable now by those buildings, there's no retail going on there. There's nothing going on. We're in the middle of a pandemic, and we know, and we've seen the numbers, our sales tax over the next few months, over the next couple of years, is, is gonna go down sharply. We've already laid off two employees. We've already had to implement furloughs for employees. I got here, and within two or three weeks, I was laying off employees and giving everybody a 10% pay cut. Not, not very good. So, those sales tax dollars that could be generated by that side of the street are extremely valuable to this community. It's extremely valuable to the other side of the street with the other businesses there. So, I guess what I'm trying to say is, by looking at the data and looking at the facts of prior attempts by Mr. Juarez to do something else in these, in a neighboring community, I just don't see it. I don't see it happening. Instead, I see, when I go back and look at the minutes, as the mayor pointed out, and as what I've been able to ascertain, it is very evident that all we're getting, and I know you're just new to this, and I think there were some new folks here in February as well, that we're just getting excuse after excuse after excuse. And, and, don't take this wrong, but I've had vendors from Sacramento, from the Bay Area, that have come up here and stopped to say hi, and, you know, you know, from a distance, social distance, and introduced themselves. So, I kinda hard, find it hard to believe that nobody is willing to travel up here from the Bay Area to do some work. And as it was stated, if you can't do it, you send, you go out and you sub out the work. So, the fact that it was stated at the beginning, you know, John had called three different engineers within this area, and none of them wanna work with Mr. Juarez. Again, data, facts, very difficult to work with. So, I look at it not only from a safety hazard, and when John and I looked at those buildings around the country, where similar situations that were occurring, and eventually, the buildings gave to and fell because they were not being taken care of, it, 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 it's a, like I said, it's a bad safety issue, but also, it's a bad economic issue for my community. And I feel very strongly about that. And we have to protect those sales tax dollars, and right now, nothing is being generated on that entire block, so.
I totally understand that. That's part of where I am, as a data guy myself, I am looking at, at building, I build five-year financials for companies, and this is what I do. And so, that's what I'm looking at. And, you know, where I'm, I'm based out of, previously, out of Ojai, California, there are half a dozen businesses that have shut down because of this. And so, there, you know, this is, this is something that's affecting everybody's dollars around the country.
Sure.
And so, you know, I, I understand Weed is even more impacted because there, it's got, it's, there is a hole in that revenue base to start with. And we're very aware of that. And as maybe called the flavor of the month, but I actually have known Mark for about seven or eight years, and I know his previous businesses with the Happy Company, and I know what made him successful. I know what made him, you know, gave him the opportunity to speak around the country, to speak on, you know, on, on building a successful business. And, you know, what I see is that Mark just hasn't had the right system and support to make that happen. And that's what we're, and I'm in the, in the process of coming, I'm on-boarded and onboarding a team, where we've actually started a new corporation that we can bring investment dollars into, because as you said, or somebody said earlier, that's like, where's the money coming from? There will need to be investment dollars raised. And so, we're looking to take Mark out of the primary management role, and to put him as a shareholder more than a manager. And so, we're bringing in a new management team, giving people stakes in the company for coming onboard, working with us. And so, you know, this is, this is why it's, this is why I would see that this is different than maybe past attempts. You know, this is, I don't know. I'm not here to convince you of that. All I'm here is to say that, you know, if you can give us 30, 60 days to put some kind of plan together to get the engineers here, we should be able to get them here within two to three weeks, and have the report within.
You just stated that they weren't gonna come until after the COVID-19 thing was...
The architect, the engineer.
Well, the architect.
The engineer will come, will come in a, we're, we're in the process of scheduling a date now. He's working with his schedule and his team to build a schedule, and to bring his forensic, he's, you know, he, he's a forensic engineer. He will do a complete analysis of these buildings, which is what you're looking for. This, the report will be, you know, and it will be completely independent. It, it, there may be things in there that we don't wanna hear. You know, I'm sure there very well be, you know? And, and so, the key is, yes, this all has to be taken care of, this, we, you know, you need a plan, we're trying to put that plan together for you. That's, you know, I, and...
But, but, Mr. Tomczak, he's had 60 days since the last time he was here in February to get that engineering done, and I understand what's happened over the last 60 days, but as the mayor stated, from the, that, that time in February through the time that the governor shut it down, he had about six weeks to get it done. And he was needing to do that because he had another hearing in, was it April, John? Was the next hearing? Yeah. So, he, I mean, we expected, you know, we had to pu, push the meeting in April simply because of, you know, the uncertainty of what was going on. And, and so, we give him plenty notice, so he's known another month that he's had to get this done, and nothing. And, and I, like I said, I've only been here two months. I've reviewed, looked through the files, talked to John extensively, actually walked, I didn't go in the buildings, but walked around the buildings. And it's, to me, it's sad, not just sad because of the shape of the building, but sad for this community, because this community has so much potential, and the potential for having festivals and events and things down there. But we can't have that, Mr. Tomczak, because right now, you got two, three buildings there that are in horrible shape, that are actually safety hazards, that we would be concerned of folks getting injured or killed around those buildings. So, I mean, that, that, that from us, you have to understand our frustration as well.
I, I understand, and...
Excuse me, in fact, may I say something, gentlemen and ladies and gentlemen?
Yes, Mrs.?
Chin.
Ms. Chin?
This is Terry Chen. Okay, my name is Terry Chen, and the first time I came to Weed, I think it's 2015, and then after person was responsible to bring the Chinese delegation to Weed and sign sister school with COS. So, the first group came in, I believe, 2017, and the second group, that was a, a group of teachers, came in the January 2019, just recently. So, and actually, I was going to bring, you know, another project to the, to the City of Weed, but because of coronavirus, and, you know, we stopped, you know, that way there. And also, I would like to mention that I have involved with the, finding the best, you know, architect and engineer, and to set up, you know, a team to work on this project, because when Mark approached me, you know, to look at the, the, you know, potential of the use of the building, and at that point, I start getting involved and doing some research about the possibility of a viable business in Weed. And when, when, and when I look at the, the location of the, his building, the proximity of, to the COS, and I realized that that may be a good opportunity to put, you know, some of the business there. So, I just wanted to mention that, you know, in the last month, I get involved finding the architect and engineers, and, and then I just upload a file, that is the team building, you know, the process, and, and the two expert, the engineer and the architect is, you know, recommended by myself, and I really believe that they would do a great job, because I from Vancouver, I'm, I'm responsible for bringing international students to a school district in Vancouver, and I helped the, the school district to build sister relationship with the Dunsmere High, Second Secondary, their bonded sister school. So, in, in our district, school district, we have 500 international students, and basically, same as, you know, all the government, you know, in US and Canada. So, our government cutting, you know, fund on the education, but because we built this project like 20, 20 years ago, so our, our school district, you know, we, we just have 500 international students, amount of 12,000, you know, student base, because we're very careful to kind of limit the international student into like a 5% or less than 5%. And among the international student, we, we, you know, we work in different, you know, nationality, so, in, for Chinese student, we just have 200, and our 500, so we have student from Germany, we have student from Mexico, Australia, even some from, from the States. And so, it could be a very nice international environment for, for the local student.
Ms. Chin, may I just interrupt you, please? Can, can we know what your function is towards this hearing matter, and how you're involved as a team member? Can we have that specifically? Thank you for your explanation about this previous, but can we have your purpose and your attempt to what you're gonna be purposing for this hearing right now? That's what we need from you, ma'am, as speaker.
Okay, so, so, I'm sorry I go too, too much of my introduction, but the thing is, I was just trying to, you know, tell, you know, you guys that I get involved with choosing the engineer, so, and I hear a lot of concern about, you know, is it really true? So, I just wanted to say that I did that, I got involved, and I want to kind of participate in this project, and with the help of the engineer, the architect, and Gary, in the business side, and the marketing people, and the developer, and the developer, I hope I can bring some of my expertise and to, to the City of Weed, and help Mark to bring his building up to code. And what I'm trying to say is that I want to see Mark's building to, to bring it up to code, so he can start making some awareness for the city and for the, for the project to go, because I don't, I think, once the, the property is up to code, they can, he can run it out, so the cash flow can fund, you know, our master planning. And with that, we can, you know, we like to work with the city, and I would like to kind of bring our proposals to the city and work together to bring some business to, to the City of Weed.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay, so, in your case, I think, I think I want to make the last comment, because, you know, the Farie, the Dr. Farie, he's, you know, he's a really amazing, you know, engineer, and he said that, you know, he, the timeline for him to come up is about two weeks. He want to make sure that, you know, everything, the stay-home, you know, order is relaxed, relaxed a little bit, so he's more comfortable to come up to, to do the annual report. We got Michael, because he just has to have a newborn, you know, a grand, grandchild. He does not want to, you know, jeopardize, you know, the, his family, so he said, his timeline is, it would be about June. So, this is the, the, in the meeting that we come, we come up with, and, and this is the fact, and I just want to put it in the record.
Thanks, Terry. Terry is, is a part of our team. She, as you're hearing, this is part of like finding the right use for the buildings that we are speaking to. So, Terry is looking at some of the, you know, continuing some of the discussions that were originally started with COS around international students, and how that might participate in this. We are looking at other pieces. Terry, you know, is really good at international business development and such, and so, you know, this is all part of, of our, you know, our planning stage. I, and I, again, I understand you say, you know, you've heard a lot of these things before. I've just come onboard as of, Mark and I reconnected April 9th, I believe it was, and, you know, so, and I've been in process of, you know, actually kind of more firefighting mode than actually business planning mode, and I'm hoping that if we can get an, an extension of, you know, 30 to 60 days, that we can, you know...
Sir, you bring no credibility to the word "find," and going, going by what you're saying. You're saying we're trying to find individuals. It's past the time to find individuals. We need them here and doing, exercising work, doing things. Finding is not a good word for me. And, and I, I don't wanna employ, employ you anymore, but we're past the time of finding individuals to fix things. They need to be here fixing things, regardless of excuses. There could be advice, there could be travel, there could be new people in their family. We can all find excuses, but behavior is what I'm always looking at from people when they're explaining things. And your look, your words, you're finding individuals. We're past that finding time.
Find was in relation to tenants. Sorry, I think that was my use.
It wasn't your sentence, sir, but keep going.
Okay.
Or finish.
Hang on. Kim, did you have, and then, Ken?
Well, okay, so, we actually have precedent of some of what's going on here, and most of the people that are in that room probably don't even remember the Red Coat Motel.
I do.
That this is how it started, and it ended with a great big pot of land, because everything was torn down, because we couldn't get past this point of him actually fixing any of the buildings. And so, they got to, they, they were in such disrepair that the entire thing had to be torn down. And then, the same thing that's happening to us is happening in Dunsmere, and I would guarantee that Dunsmere is looking at what's happening here as to how they're gonna proceed with the properties that are down there. And then, I do have a question. So, so she, did she say that she's in Canada?
She's in Vancouver, yes.
Vancouver, and she's picking an architect for Weed?
She's done the research, and, and we've, we've been in, in the dialogues, and we've, we're just looking for the timeframe to ring him up here. He's based in Sacramento.
Okay, so, our priority is not, I guess I speak for myself. My priority is not, I think it's great if we have international students, we've done it before, it's not a really big thing, that's, that's all well and good. But that certainly is not the priority for me. The priority for me is the people that live here, that had faith in Mark when he came here however many years ago, and listened to all of his promises, and which most of them have never come to fruition. And actually, making our downtown look halfway inviting, that would be a goal for me, not to bring students to the college when we already don't have enough housing. And then, the other thing is, you just said that you're bringing on partners, and they are, they're getting part of the company? are getting part of the company? What company is that? Is that the Happy Company?
No, this is a new corporation that's just been formed, and we're in the process of then going to transfer title into this. We're just, you know, as things are looking to...
I just see this as another, another way of getting around what really needs to be done and what should have been done five years ago, 10 years ago, in December. I've been on the council, I think, for maybe five years now, and this was a problem when I got here. And every time I've ever heard any presentation or talked about any of his properties at a city council meeting, whether it was with attorney number one, or the event planner, or somebody who wanted to rent a building, or the lady who was going to help put it all this together, and then the other lawyer, and now you, and now the people up in Canada, we haven't moved any farther forward, but we surely moved a hell of a lot further backwards. And I personally have been in those buildings, especially the Black Butte. And when there is a refrigerator that still has food in it, in an establishment that hasn't been open for over five years, that tells you they're doing nothing.
I can't speak to that, but I can speak, you know, when we talk about the new company. If you bring any developer in here, they're going to say, you put things into a new company so that you can bring in the right partners, the right investors, things like that. This is the way any business person would set this up. And so, you know, that's just, that's standard process. So, we're not looking to do anything out of normal. We're actually looking to bring things to...
Okay, okay, I buy that answer. I buy that. And like I said before, he should have done that five years ago, 10 years ago. And we wouldn't be in the position we're in right now, and he wouldn't be in the position he was in right now.
I can't speak to that, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Kim. Ken?
Yeah, I would concur with everything that's said from our council's standpoint. The time is over. However, I would, it's a total disrespect for our community the way that Mark's behavior has been going on. Just disrespectful. I don't know where, if you can even get that back. You can tell that we are extremely resistive. Where we wished him success, I'm not sure what I wish him, but I don't think it's success anymore, just to be honest. I would like a question to our legal department. If we go forward with the abatement order, how long does that take, Bob?
Right now, the court has limited activity, but I expect they would have a hearing on this within probably 60 days once it's filed. If we file a petition and ask for a hearing, probably 60 days out.
Well, there we go. There we got his 60 days, and we don't have to do up anything but continue with the notice of abatement. So, I hope my council members are hearing that.
May I suggest something? Because, you know, the engineer is nine up, and he just want to give him like two weeks to come up. So, even, it is concerned about the building and the safety. So, I think it's a good idea to wait two, at least two weeks, so to wait for this engineer to come up to do a report, so everybody will have a peace of mind, while they're waiting for the, you know, law proceeding, you know, to finalize whatever, you know, you guys tried to do. Because I am the person in contact with the engineer, and I heard that, you know, he's qualified, he has a PhD, and he know old building very well. So, I wish, you know, the council will give this, you know, expert an opportunity to really look at the building and do a report and go from there.
Thank you.
I will add to that. If we give you two weeks, that means we don't hear it for another two weeks after the two weeks, which gives them another 30 days. I'm not looking forward to that.
The engineer is in two weeks' time, but we would like to give another week. Let's say it's fair to give three weeks, can we extend it for three weeks? So, we try to get an engineer to come up.
If we go forward with the abatement order, you can do whatever you need, but we need to go forward with the abatement order, in my opinion.
Okay.
Jeff, do you have anything to add?
Oh, Jeff, do you want to talk? Are you just going to do your attorney stuff on me?
No, I didn't have anything to add. I think that I have a sense of which direction the council is going to go, so.
Okay.
I do think we will request time. Certainly, the COVID-19 issue is a real one. I mean, I would just be restating what I've already stated.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. John? Would you like to talk?
I'll be brief.
That's all right. Okay.
In a microphone? Oh, perfect, thanks.
Yeah, he's got one.
Seven weeks ago, Mr. Juarez was in my office for about two hours, and I explained to him repeatedly, all he needed was a set of engineered plans that could be reviewed, approved, in which case, he could get a permit to do what he needed to do. None of that sunk in to him. And I told him that, I know, in fact, I know I told him six times, because I told him, in the last two hours, I've told you this six times, and nothing sunk in. So, that's one of those things. They keep mentioning this catch 22. A catch 22 doesn't exist when all you need is an engineer's report that provides engineered, sealed, signed, stamped plans that can be reviewed and approved. That's no catch 22. The stop work order can disappear if I have plans. It's that simple. Let's see. Mr. Swanson seemed to make an argument concerning engineers being unavailable. Two of the engineers that I spoke to today are local. The other one is not. And he told me that basically, he could be here next week doing a site inspection. So, as far as I'm concerned, that argument that Mr. Swanson made doesn't hold water. Let's see, what else? As far as that little piece of metal, I know that Justin and I have been behind and in those buildings, and that little piece of metal could have come from anywhere. No offense, not to disagree with somebody. In my emails that I received on 4/6, April 6th, it says that windows were ordered from Anderson Glass, they have not been ordered. So, that's a lie, just let's call it what it is. In my office are plans, plans from everything, from a garage to a multimillion dollar truck stop. Everybody else can do that. I have people come in, how do we build this? I tell them how to do it. This guy can't figure it out. I don't believe that his new helper can figure it out. So, that's where I'm at. So, that's as brief as I'll be.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Mayor?
Yes, Bob?
Yes. I just, I guess I'm a soft cutz, but I'd piggyback on what Ken was talking about regarding, we go ahead and filing the abatement. And if we file the abatement, for the abatement, and Ms. Chen and Gary come back next, in 30 days, with a list of, list of things that are done, if they were up to snuff as far as what we see moving in the right direction, can we pull that abatement?
Any legal proceeding can be stayed by the agreement of the parties. We could certainly do that.
Okay.
Well, I'm sorry, I know that, but I'm as tired as any of you regarding this. And the key word that John's talking about, lies. We can't have lies. I mean, we can't have a relationship with lies. As we open up a new dialogue with Gary, Ms. Chen, I want to believe them. And I do. But I also wonder if they really realize who they're dealing with, because nobody else has had any success dealing with Mark. And a lot of people have tried. I mean, a lot of good people have tried. So, if it's possible to do the, start the abatement process and pull it in 30 days, if we see that something's actually being done, and we see an engineer's report that shows what needs to be done, and hopefully, with the financial status of what it's going to cost, and proof, or some type of indication that it can be achieved. But I also respect the rest of council, and the understanding of the Jesus, it's been going on for so long, it's pretty close to ridiculous.
Exhausting.
Is it possible to do that, or what's the rest, you guys?
Um, hang on a second, Bob. Kim, did you have something else?
Yes, yeah, I have a question. So, right now, do we have fines against him that are owed to the city?
Yes. Kim, about, let me think, I think it was, oh, I had the date here. April 7th, I levied, I wrote citations for Mr. Juarez for three separate buildings, $25,000 per building.
And have we received any money at all on those?
No.
Have we received actually any acknowledgement, or an attempt to pay, or attempt to...
He objected to the citations. That's all we've received.
There was one before that, I believe.
Yes, there was one, actually, there were two, Stacy. There was one early last summer for $1,000 per building, a total of $3,000, which he paid. Then, later that fall, there was another set of citations, $5,000 per building, $15,000 total, which took him approximately four months to pay.
So, what's the current status as of today, as of this meeting, as of this time right now?
As of right now, as far as I'm concerned, he owes us $75,000.
Which he's objected to.
Correct.
What's the response after that objection? Does it go through a court proceeding, or legal proceeding, or a lawyer, or something? What happens after that?
Bob would have to answer that.
That would go to our municipal law judge, DLJ.
Do we have to wait for this new company to be formed, to pay us that $75,000?
Kim, restart your question, because Bob was speaking, he didn't hear you.
Okay. So, do we have to wait until they form this new company to pay us this $75,000? Or should the Happy Company be paying us this $75,000? And if these fines aren't paid, and there hasn't even been any attempt to discuss them, then I really don't see where the money's going to come from to pay the engineer.
Yes.
He has a right to an administrative hearing through the process, and we haven't reached that point yet. We've had two sets of citations issued, those were paid on the third set. He still has a right to an administrative hearing on that.
What time does he have? What timeframe does he have from refusing the notices in the abatement hearing? Is there a timeframe? I know there is.
It's, I believe, I defer to the council, but I believe it's 60 days. I don't know offhand.
Yeah, we should know that, since he's refused to pay the last fine.
Okay. If anybody else has any questions, we're going to close the hearing, and then it will be time for the five of us to discuss what we would like to do.
Excuse me.
Bob?
Ms. Mayor, was there any comment from Ms. Chen or Gary regarding the $75,000 penalties?
Oh, Gary's going to say something.
Well, as has been stated, there has been an objection filed, and so, it's really now a matter of handling it through that process. You know, and so, that's what we're waiting for, the next steps from your side, actually, in terms of what the next steps are, when we would actually have a hearing or whatever for that. So, we're actually in a waiting period for that. So, it's, Ball is in your court for that.
Word you used, your standard operating procedure. You see where the situation is, what is your response to that? You know you were fined, you know we disagree with what's been communicated. What is your next step for step two? You have to have something as a business person. What is next for you and the corporation? Waiting for a response from the city? I don't believe that should be your response. You should have something coming from you that's saying something. You're going to pay it, you're not going to pay it, you refuse to. You have to have something, sir.
We are looking toward, you know, the legal process to go through that. And we have several suggestions, but, you know, I don't believe this is the forum to be addressing the citations. That's not in my jurisdiction at this point. You know, as far as I know, it's a legal process, and anything I say toward that, you know, I don't want to have things misconstrued, and/or, you know, create something that would create a legal precedent toward that hearing.
Interesting answer, thank you. Interesting, that's all.
Okay. All right, nobody else has questions, we're good. I'm going to close the hearing, so that the five of us can discuss this. And I do have something to ask, Bob. So, the hearing is closed. So, Bob, if we file this abatement, is that what it's called? And it's going to, you said it's going to take 60 days.
Right, for a hearing, yeah.
For a hearing. Can they then move forward with what they're going to do? And then, because, you know, Gary, I told this to Mrs., was it Mrs. Taylor that was here the last time? We have to decide what... I really want to believe you, and, but there's just no, there's no background, there's nothing else that's happened for me to believe any of this stuff. I'd love to believe you, I'd like to see that happen. So, if we go for the hearing, and it's going to take 60 days, can they start moving forward and do something?
Yes.
And so, in 30 days, when we come back here in, whatever day it's going to be in June, and Gary's going to show up and go, look what we've done. We have a engineer's report, the architect has been here, it's going to be all rainbows and unicorns, everything's going to be great. And then, we could say, right, we're going to drop our, so we could do that.
Good.
So, no matter what, I mean, we can tell them, no, we're not giving you 60 days, because we're going to do this, but they can go ahead and start doing something.
That's right.
They still own the building, they can bring an engineer in.
So, he can... Gary?
The only thing I would caution our council is that, once we suspend the abatement, we will most likely have to do another abatement.
No, no, no. We're going to move forward with the abatement, right? We're going to move forward.
If we all vote on it.
You have to vote for that.
Right, yes, yes, if we all vote on it, and we move forward with that. But they can still, they can still do their thing. I'm echoing someplace, Jeremy. They can still start their thing, right?
They can start it.
And...
I think we're blowing smoke in the wind, but okay.
Well, Ken? I've got unicorns and rainbows.
I'm trying.
So, is that an option?
Ms. Mayor, I agree with you. I think that, obviously, I do, I said it originally, but I think that, I think if nothing else, and I think I refer this to John, but if we have a copy of the engineer's report, I think we've accomplished something that we're going to need down the road either way.
No. Do we already know what you're going to say? Yeah, okay. Sorry, John. So, that's an option. So, we say, continue, Bob, continue with your thing, and that could be, our motion is that we continue filing for a hearing.
The motion's in the staff report, you can read it.
I can do that, I'll make a motion. I move that the council find the condition of the property at 219, 247, 259, and 261, and any number in between that, except for the Canada Trading Building, as described in the notice of repair.
Canada Trading, except for?
Or abate. Or abate constitutes an immediate threat to public safety and that the owner has been given adequate time to remediate but has not done so. The city attorney in consultation with the city manager may commence such legal proceedings as are authorized by law.
I will second that.
All right. Any more discussion, Bob, Stacy?
No questions.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So we're moving forward, but Gary, there you are. Go with your big bad self. You get, let's see, let's, I want so bad for you to come back here and there, you have all that stuff. We would all be ecstatic and I'm deja vu-ing again because I think I've said this.
Behavior and actions, not just words and sentences. Behaviors, changes of position, changes, something different so we don't have to worry about it being unsafe. That's, that's the bottom line.
Okay.
I'm, I'm a man of action, Eagle Scout, so I don't take stands. That's why I'm very careful.
I was, I was a Boy Scout, so I'm watching you.
My brother's an Eagle Scout. My son was an Eagle Scout.
I'd like to say thanks to John and everybody who participated for putting in all the hard work and all the logistics to get this done. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, so, okay. So are we done?
With this, yeah.
Yeah, no, not completely, sorry. That was fun. Moving to the regular agenda, I need to add an item C to the regular agenda and it's a letter from the City of Wheat in support of the resolution to this county board of supervisors. Um, do I have to have, do we have to vote on that?
You have to make a finding that the need to take action arose since the agenda was posted and you require a two-thirds vote.
Yes.
I so move.
Do we need a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Kim. Did you get that? Okay, so we're adding item C. All right, we will move on to administration. Council will consider resolution number 14-2020 adopting and setting a gross receipt tax and cultivation tax per square foot of canopy.
Hurry up.
Can we, never mind, I can make it.
Do you have a report?
Huh? No, I can make it.
Do you have a report from the city or someone? Because I have it a percentage, I've been having for five years, I want to put first.
You do?
I do.
We, we, and I apologize, this, Kim, on the agenda kind of snuck up on us, but we don't have a report per se, but you're all aware of the special election that took place on June 5th, 2018, where the voters voted in favor of allowing the council to go forward and, and assess these taxes or fees per square foot when it comes to the cultivation tax. So with that, like I said, we, we can discuss it and I know that myself and Justin and Sandy can ask, you know, answer the questions that, that make, that may arise.
Okay, do we have people on here that want to speak about this?
I believe we do.
Yeah, I think we do too.
Any business personnels or people on the community, your time now is to speak, so please give us a notice.
Shane?
Which one is it, Shane or?
Yeah, that was Shane's voice.
Go ahead and present your idea, sir.
Shane, don't mute yourself.
Can, can I ask a question while he's figuring that out? Are we talking just, I'm a little bit into the title, adopting, is that gross receipts or cannabis sales or is that just cultivation?
It's tax and cultivation. It's two, two separate ones.
Okay. I just needed to clarify.
Do we have a number that we come up with? Are we? I'm sorry. Go ahead, Shane.
That's what the vote was, yes, okay.
Shane, are you talking?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, okay, so the cultivation tax, are we going, I know we're talking about, are we going to do canopy size and is it per year or is it per crop? Is it monthly?
My, my recommend, my recommendation would be just set it for the year and then come back. And then I think it's, the way it was laid out, wasn't it to be billed out quarterly? Was it? Yes.
Nothing for size and space?
That's it, yeah, that is, that is the square footage.
Oh, it is. So it is attached, okay, yeah, we need to have this, the sizes.
So that would be every quarter, we would look at that and pay the tax or a yearly rate or paid quarterly?
It would be the square footage times whatever the council decides the fee shall be per square foot, the, and it would be an annual rate, but you would pay it quarterly. So for instance, if it was a $25 per square foot and you had 100 square feet, it's $2,500, billed out quarterly, so it'd be $625 per quarter.
Okay. Gotcha.
And what percent would that be at? Explain?
That's not a percent, that's the canopy.
Okay.
The percent is something else.
I'll get that percentage in.
I know, you're dying for that one, actually. Justin, did you have something for that? Does anybody else out there have any other comments on this?
I have another clarification question.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so this was, we had to have voted on this, right? This was what was in the primary? The vote in the primary?
Well, a year ago, a year and a half ago.
Right, okay. So, um, what I want to know is if the title is correct, because I don't remember it being gross sales tax.
Yeah, it was. I do remember that part, it was.
Was it cannabis tax or was it gross sales tax?
Get your hand out of your mouth. There. It was gross receipt. And remember, we said that it could go up to 10%?
Right. I, I just wasn't sure if the, if the word gross was part of the voting. Okay.
It wasn't, because I remember I wanted to pick a number percentage. Everyone said, no, let's wait. I'd like to hear what Liz, what you have as a business owner, percent to this, since you've been compliant since day one. Elizabeth?
Yes. Fine. Okay, there she is. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, sorry. So, um, of course, I, I already deal with this in Mount Shasta, so I don't know if Tim, our new city manager, if he has communicated with, you know, Mount Shasta and how they're, you know, taxing and, and what they're doing there. Um, the difference, yeah, Mount Shasta has 26 licenses that they get to tax. As of right now, I feel like, as far as I know, on a legal term, I'm the only one that's paid for and has a license. It's a cannabis tax. So with the state and with the city there, I pay a tax on cannabis sales because realize the way that my store's designed, we also have traditional retail items there that are not cannabis. That tax you get every month when I pay the California Department of Tax and Fee. So we voted to have a cannabis tax, so you are taxing our cannabis sales. Yes, it's a, it's a touchy subject right now. I'm sorry with COVID, you know, you start a new business in a town and you think everything's going to go great and this has really been a tough couple of months. I've lost employees, we've had a loss in business. I had to pull the last little bit that I had to make sure, you know, I could get through the payroll session. So it's, it's a sensitive subject and I apologize that I'm sensitive to this topic right now because it is scary. We get no federal assistance, I get no state assistance. As you know, I put money into opening the business next door, which I had to turn around and shut down and because I have a cannabis business, I couldn't even get any assistance on just a little retail boutique. Yes, Mount Shasta has a 3% cannabis tax on our cannabis sales. I'm just, I only hold one license in Mount Shasta out of the 26 that they get taxed on. I feel that, yes, the cannabis industry, since you're allowing us to be here, assists the city. All I can do is plead that we're in a very tough time right now and that maybe we take a very small percentage and consider starting that as soon as we see what the outcome of this COVID, I almost said the wrong word, the COVID stuff ends. And I'm hoping that, you know, maybe towards like January of 2021, we can start a fresh year with maybe a new tax, maybe we'll have some other licensed holders besides myself and help the city with that because as I understand, as a business owner and being in the city, this has affected all of the businesses here. The city's hurting, the rec center's hurting, I mean, this is a terrible time and granted, you know, they might call us essential and we're allowed to stay open, but it has been a very, very hard hit. So I basically feel like I'm sitting here pleading with you to not, to help me make it through this and not find me having to close my doors in, you know, six or 12 months from now.
Awesome.
Elizabeth, wouldn't this, this percentage, wouldn't it just be a pass-through to your customers?
Pardon?
Wouldn't it be a pass-through to your customers?
Wouldn't it just be a pass-through to your customers?
Okay, so, so in Mount Shasta, that I talked to the California Department of Tax and Fee and that really comes down to the way that you write this verbiage in the tax to be collected. So there is specific wording that you have to use that then says on my receipts, I have to add to the customer's purchase a city tax. So then, yes, I can recoup that, basically it goes to the customer, comes to me, goes to you. But it has to be worded as so. If not, you're basically saying, Elizabeth, we want, you know, one and a quarter or we want three or 10% of everything that you're doing. If I had to do that, there's, there's no way none of us would exist. So, yes, there, there is special wording that you have to put in the way that I am allowed to collect that tax that goes to the city.
Elizabeth, let me ask you a question. We've talked about it before, but it's been three years since you've been in business, right?
Yes, sir. No, two, a full two years, February, February 15th.
And I think from a business perspective, realizing that tax should be, because I tried to push it the first time three years ago, everybody said, wait. And I was pushing a 3%, which I still push now, so that's on record, I push 3%. But I think from business perspective, if it goes to your customers, that's the purpose of it. So the customers are paying for your effective business increase and us supporting that. I think that's a good business, so we're not, we're not trying to say you paid out of your extra money that you're trying to save and make a business of, but it goes through the sales purpose and I think that's what our effort is. Again, that's what I might think it is.
Yeah, exactly. So, so we have to add that additional fee into the, the amount of our product to be purchased.
And that goes to the customer, right? Through sales?
Yes. And then the state actually will come in and inspect our receipts to make sure that our receipts are broke down to the excise tax, the regular CD TFA tax, and then to the city tax. And then it's the final number to the customer.
And I think that's a viable option, right?
And, pardon?
Viable option from a sales perspective as not paying a business for two and a half years' tax on that perspective, isn't it viable now? As a business owner, I'm asking for your experience. Isn't that just viable due now?
I, I think it would have been had this pandemic not hit.
Can I chime in on that? Can I, can I chime in?
Yes.
Our, our customers through the, sorry, our customers through the state are already paying a 35% tax rate before they get out before. So if you're going to put a tax on top of that, that's an unprecedented as well to where no other business in the nation pays a higher tax than us. That being said as well, Lomirian just got a green tag Monday with all of our new steps, so our new spot would technically be a new business as well. And everything being so, it's just really hard to throw that at a customer. We're passing that on to people who aren't working right now, to people who are on unemployment, to just all the hardship, just a lot right now.
But everyone pays sales tax, right? If you're a business, you're going to pay sales tax regardless of how it's coming now because of the virus. But everyone pays sales tax, is that, is that, am I wrong?
A 28% excise tax as well before and then you tax the seven, what, 75% after that and then put another three on that.
Stacy, you're, you're correct, yes. The, the taxes that we collect come from the patrons that come in. And, and that's how it is everywhere in every city that applies this tax. I was going to tell Tim, in Shasta, which is nice, we as the cannabis license holder, we can choose to come in and pay our tax to the city monthly, we can come in and pay it at a quarter. So whatever works well for us and to financially, I, you know, I'd rather come in monthly and pay than at the end of three months have to come in with this chunk of money. So they, they work with us. We, we're given the option of the way that we want to pay, so we chose to come in and pay monthly. When I pay our quarterly, I pay monthly to the state, CD TFA, I pay monthly to the federal, I pay monthly to the city. And then when I file my quarterlies, I give a copy of that quarterly as well to Muriel as well as my monthly payment. So when you're working with us in the cannabis industry, to help us figure out what works best for us to pay you, so far it's been a great relationship. So that's something really to consider. With a cultivation tax, there's the potential if Shane is growing and there is a mishap in that grow and he has to cut it down or has to be replaced and then you're telling him that, you know, you've got to pay this thing on quarterly, but they didn't produce. So you really, please give us the consideration to, to make the option whether to pay monthly, quarterly, every six months, what, what works best because there are so many unknowns. Yeah, did we all expect COVID? Yeah, did, you know, any kind of instance that state all of a sudden changes their regulations on us again, which is a roller coaster of a ride. So the city, it's a privilege to be here. I've tried to donate to any different instances that I can because you haven't taxed me to this point. I think you should set a tax. Yes, Stacy, I agree. I am just asking that you don't say, we're starting this next month because I am basically pleading with you to see if we can get through the next couple of months of this.
Understand the importance of the virus affecting businesses and from what I'm, I'm knowing with my council people, we don't all agree, but I know we're not going to bleed your heart. So we're not looking at 10%. I'm sure I can say that as a fact. Now below 10%, we're looking at those numbers and probably small numbers. So I, I just want to get to where it's, it's better for you, but thank you for acknowledging that because you had that space of no sales tax. Now there is business and, and we need to be cautious and I think we always have, every time you come before, it's you and Shane and other folks with possibilities, we've always considered those and I know the hearts of my people here that we will do the same here.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Kim.
Uh, thanks, Ms. Mayor. I had a couple of things to ask. First of all, I will disagree with Shane that you're not the only one that gets taxed that high, it's called sin tax and alcohol and tobacco also contribute to that outrageous tax. When I was a smoker, I really did disagree with that. Second, I would like to know from Tim whether if we establish, or maybe even Elizabeth can answer this question, if we establish an additional sales tax, does this go through the Board of Equalization? And if it does go through the Board of Equalization, there is a setup fee that we experienced with the quarter percent sales tax when we did the, for the seniors and for the bus and for all of those things.
Tim, that was.
Uh, so, um, it is strictly, the tax that I would collect for the city is act- So, it is strictly, the tax that I would collect for the city is actually, I, I can actually show maybe Emily the form that Mount Shasta derived. That is a form that got emailed to me. I go in and I pay that tax directly to the city. It doesn't go through the Department of Tax and Fee. That is your tax. That is something you implemented and the way that you implemented it. I will still pay my CD TFA tax. And yes, you will also, you do receive one and a quarter percent every month I pay. So you're getting a one and a quarter every month when I pay and when I pay quarterly. And then you would apply a separate tax. Let's say you did one and a half right now. You would end up getting two, you know, 275, you would almost be at the 3%. You were just getting portion of it paid directly to you and the other portion comes from the CD TFA.
Well, the important part for me was that it doesn't go through the Board of Equalization.
No, it does not. It goes directly to you. I walk right into the city and I pay it.
Yeah.
Great, because that was about an $80,000 price tag.
Right, and you don't have to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so something that I want everybody to consider when we're setting this percentage is that, yes, this fee should pass through to the consumer. So for the business owner, it's not costing them anymore if you look at it that way. But the higher the fees go and the higher the prices go to the patrons.
The less business.
The less business and the more people who are going back to black market, which is what we're trying to avoid.
So, let me, if we could start with a.
Bob, you good? You don't have any questions?
She's still talking though. She's suggesting a percentage.
Oh, Bob, can, can you unmute it?
Times one and a quarter, an additional one and a quarter.
And I also think something to consider is even though we're voting, even though we're voting on this tonight, it doesn't mean that we have to make it effective tonight. I mean, we can vote that this will go into effect when our counties are released to go back to normal. We can say it's going to happen in September or December, whatever we want. So just, just keep that in mind.
Yeah, and keep in mind, Proctober is terrible. There's no business in October, November when all the black markets are harvesting. So just.
Okay.
So what is the point of it having on the agenda tonight if we're not going to make some sort of decisions? I mean, otherwise, we could just postpone this to a later date.
I, I think we can make decisions. I, I just, everything else is hurting because of this COVID, so I, I just hate to hurt businesses anymore. And I, I mean, I, I, I want to believe that we will be out of this by July. And that's not that far away. And that would give us time to set everything up. So, and just, just my two cents worth.
That'd give the city six months of tax.
Yeah, and then Elizabeth just actually did some math. If it was one and a quarter percent.
One and a, well, we could go, we could, if we could start at one and a half for the first six months, starting July, at least we could see how much money that would, because I, I feel like right now you're going to mostly be getting that money from me. I kind of averaged it out. That'd be almost $1,000 a month. And then come January 1, with COVID lift and everything goes back to normal, January 1, we could put it on the agenda to see if, if a valuable increase could be made or something.
If Cana Trading is selling retail.
Ken, say that again.
What, Ken?
If Cana Trading is selling, doing retail delivery, do we get a tax off of that retail delivery even though it may not occur in our city?
Do we know they are, Justin?
Well, they're not, they're not stating that they're open yet. But yes, it would because that sale per retail delivery would have to generate from that store per BCC.
Do we get anything from them? Do we know if we get anything?
They are working with the city clerk and the building department and myself to reopen.
No, but if they're out delivering around San Francisco, we should be getting that one and a quarter percent that the state is sending us. Do we know? Who am I looking at? You. Do we know if we, how, anything? It just shows up in the chat.
If they're out in San Francisco delivering, then they should be losing our license.
Yeah, I know, but I know that part.
We said that last meeting.
Yeah, we know that part, but I was just wondering.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor. Looking at the resolution, what effective date is, as what Ken referenced, is this going, going to take? If, however we vote? Do we have to set the date in the, in the announcement of the resolution because it's not in the text? Bob, would you know that?
Quite well taking. You should, you should say what date it starts. You should.
So we can, we can pick a date?
That's right.
Okay. Yeah. You're stealing my thunder. I have rainbows and unicorns coming up here. Stop. Yes. If you'd sit over here where I could see your face, it would help me.
Is somebody speaking that's not near a mic?
Yeah, he was talking. He said, he said, city staff had to take a 10% cut and pot smokers could pay that 3%. Okay, I have a question about, because I have in my head this other one. So that cultivation tax per square foot, what, what do other cities, what is Mount Shasta charging for that? Tim, do you know that?
Not right off the top of my head.
Do you know?
In conversations, not with Mount Shasta's finance department, but with their police department, they've stated their current rate is 3% and they are generating 80 to $120,000 in revenue.
Right, but how about this canopy?
I'm not sure what their canopy tax is. City manager has provided you with some examples of other cities throughout the state. I'll just reference some of those based off that information you provided. Greenfield, currently, they, they started in 2017. Yes, these are all cities within the state. Greenfield started in 2017 at $15 and reached $25 by 2020. Grover.
Is that monthly or annually?
Well, that's.
It's a square.
That's based on the canopy. So they may be charging, going all the way back to the beginning of this conversation, I'm not sure if they're charging per crop or per year. What, what's been proposed by the city manager is per year.
That's annual.
Annually, yes.
So the numbers you're giving are annual responses?
I don't know that. Some, some entities may be charging per crop. So King City, they're $25 and then $10 above 5,000 square feet. Salinas is $25 per square foot of canopy.
And then, so about 5,000 feet, it's $35?
No, that, once it goes beyond that, I believe they're just charging 10.
Oh, got it.
That's, that's a, that's a larger growth and I, I believe that.
And are all these at indoor? Because indoor, you can grow four crops a year?
You can actually grow more than that. You could probably grow, and I'm just using Shane's business, having inspected that. He's got currently one grow room under production or in, in, ready to go in production. He's working on completing the second. He could potentially, depending on how much, you know, what type and potentially six crops a year with indoor.
So we would, that would need to be something where we did a per square foot yearly. We're going to assume that it all lives and it's all.
That would be the easiest way to administer it. It's just to set a per square foot per year and then they do quarterly payments to the city.
Or monthly.
And I would suggest by hearing what the examiner's saying, I was thinking higher, but knowing from what I thought three years ago, my piece, are we getting our numbers right now so we can get an average and get this going? I'm thinking $15 per square foot and 2%. Well, I said 3% for general tax. I'm between 2 and 3 for general tax. And that's the highest we can go based on what our business owner has said. We don't want to tax them higher, but we understand that they have an envelope or a white space that consumers can fill that, as our building department head has said. That would be my number, just looking to be cautious of the virus and the condition of where we are, but yet moving forward as a business. Because I, I also have optimistic that we will come out of this soon.
There's actually, and I apologize, this is a little bit more complex than I thought it had been, but there's actually three different levels of what the cultivation covers. There's an outdoor cultivation, a mixed light cultivation, and then a indoor cultivation.
Are they broken up in what you've got from other cities?
Yes. I'm going to follow my sword right now and, and tell you, I think we could probably come back if you wanted to table this. I'm just suggesting it to the next meeting with more data, more facts for you. Or, I mean, we can keep going tonight and hammer it out, but some of these cities, I mean, on the actual indoor cultivation, we can go up to $26 a square foot. On the outdoor, we can go up to $10 and then $18 for the mixed light cultivation.
We don't have outdoor, right?
No.
No, the potential, the potential was there, sort of three different types were.
No, the potential isn't there because we voted that we didn't want out, that we weren't going to allow outdoor.
Right, but we did, the main concern was the potential for the mixed light, which was developer at Southweed had expressed interest in. That's why that's on there.
So mixed light would be a plastic roof?
Yeah.
I noticed that, Tim, you don't have nursery listed on there, which is also another form of cultivation. So.
I'm going off of what was, I was going off of what was passed by, by the voters as far as what is allowed to be taxed.
Can I chime in?
I don't, I don't think we set up a taxation on nurseries.
No.
We didn't?
No, it's not in.
Was that on purpose?
Yeah, why, yeah. Each one of the cities always they charge for nurseries.
Then we need to rectify that.
And that's just a minimal yearly fee. It's not a canopy or square footage fee.
Shane, another business owner, give us your response, please.
Yeah, my question here, at 25%, or excuse me, $25 per square foot canopy, you guys are kind of going off everything south of the Bay Area. That is not like logistically anything close to us. Maybe trendy counting or similar, but at $25 per foot, that's going to put us up quite a bit a year to where the whole two employees per year. 25 is just really high. Maybe our first year to meet in the middle somewhere there, but really, being the only person in the city being taxed at, you know, that high, that's kind of really, really high to start.
And to answer Elizabeth's question about the nursery, it is within the ordinance that it is taxed at the gross tax, the gross receipts. It's the same rate as that.
Oh, so it's taxed, it's that general, because they're going to sell, A, the nursery's going to sell it?
A nursery sells.
Yeah.
Nurseries make the small baby plants that get sold to all of the retail stores in the state.
Right, and so then, and then they sell them.
They do sell them.
That comes under the general.
That would be under the, yes, the gross receipt.
Right. Yeah, there's excise tax on clones and every, clones, nursery, yes, there, there's excise state, it's licensed that way through the state as well.
So that comes, okay, so that comes under that percentage.
I don't want us to table it. I hate that word.
No, no, I, I just wanted to make sure, I mean, as an option.
I appreciate the question, but I think we can make something that's relevant and considerable.
Ken?
Okay. First of all, I believe on our taxes, we did a minimum of zero on most of it and then a maximum. What is the ma, is there a maximum that we established on square footage? And there is a maximum on sales tax as well, I believe.
Yes, the maximum on the square footage is $10 per square foot on outdoor, $18 per square foot on the mixed light, and a maximum of $26 for indoor.
Okay. I, I don't think we have enough information on what we're actually.
Oh, I do.
We're going to sit here and banter this for about an hour versus if we just kind of come up with some firm numbers and reasoning behind it. Because I think we're just kind of, I don't see the point to try to figure something out when, you know, we, I don't see the goal here.
I do.
I do too.
I want money.
Yeah, I, I get that part, but.
Well, okay.
It's not going to make enough money to make a dent at this point. One of the conversations that you alluded to, Mayor Travolero, on the call with Senator Dolly, there was a lot of conversation, but one of the biggest conversations was getting the federal government to give the state money specifically for small cities, although they sit under whatever amount that was, a lot. That's what we need. There, there is no way that a sales tax on cannabis is going to remedy anything for our little small town.
Ken, I don't think we're looking to make a dent, as you mentioned. I think we're looking to get this process started. And to be conservative is a great business mechanism to start the whole process so everyone's not, you know, going to tuna fish and cat, and cat food for dinner, you know, every day. But yet, we're still doing a movement. I think it's time to move it. I, I just don't want us to table it. I think, I agree with our mayor that we have enough information to make an educated decision that's respectable to the businesses. And I think our city manager would agree with that. I hope he would.
And it does allow you to adjust the rate as you go on too. So if you, at some point on down the road, if you decide to change the rate, you can do that as well.
I don't think I have enough information to make that determination. I, I don't see it as, I don't know what other counties are doing and what other cities are doing at this point in time, but.
Well, so why can't we start as low as possible? If we start at July 1, that covers that. Hopefully, we're all out of this by July 1 and we start at one and a half percent. And what is it, a minimum of 10?
Maximum? Maximum 10, yeah.
No, minimum of $10 per square foot.
No, no, that's the maximum.
No, maximum of $10.
There's three tiers. You've got outdoor, maximum, you can go as $10.
We don't have outdoor, so we're not talking about that anymore.
But we, we need to establish that rate if we're going to do it as a whole.
10, 15, and 20, based on what they, now.
And then the mixed light is up, up to 18 per what was approved and $26 for indoor grow.
Let's do 10 straight across.
Thank you. Can we do 10 straight across?
That's, that's a will of council.
Let's, let's, can I actually have an example here? We have a development agreement that's going in. I don't know the exact square footage of a mixed light grow, but I believe it was over 400,000 square feet. And at $10,000, $10 a square foot, I kind of like that number. We can establish another city probably, but is that burdensome on a business?
For those guys.
Ken, for us, it would put us.
And I don't know the answer to that question.
For operating, it would put us at.
So those, the numbers that Tim gave us, the 10 and the 18 and the 26, those numbers come from the Department of Food and CDP and J, Department of Food and Ag, Food and Agriculture.
But those are maxims.
But we didn't make up those numbers.
Nor are we adhering to them with the proposal that you just mentioned in those three areas.
You guys charge 26 per square foot. We're charging us $40,000 a year, 46,000.
If I charged, if we charged you, how much?
$46,800 a year is what you'd be charging us at 26,000, or at $26 per square foot.
We're not saying, we're not even, Shane, Shane, listen, 26 is the maximum. Nobody is here wanting the maximum.
Stacy just proposed 50.
No, he didn't. No, he didn't. No, no.
Well, and then, and then, all right, like as long as it can be lower, I mean, 26, never 20 is unreasonable.
I said 10. I said $10 for the footage. And that's lowest as the scale goes. And we also mentioned 1.5% for the additional on the, on the resolution. I think, and that's low. I think, I think that's honest and respectful for us to offer that.
That is respectful, 10, and very respectful.
And we can.
I think we have to be careful with taxation. Our, our goal here is to keep it out of the black market. If we, if we do it so high, they're just going to grow it out in Big Springs some more.
They've continued to do that before.
That's my opinion.
We can't touch it.
I'm raising my hand somewhere, can you see me?
I can.
Um, sorry.
Hi.
When this all first started back in 18, there's many articles out there that you can pull up that cities right off the bat, they cranked up a really high tax, people couldn't meet it, people were heavily going back to black market, and there's a lot of articles in a lot of cities that actually ended up decreasing their tax rate for this very reason. So I can only speak for myself, being the only operator that has been here, that starting at a 1 and 1/4 to 1 and 1/2% to see how we do is very reasonable. I feel like I could do that either starting in July or the beginning of the year, and I have no problem doing that for my city and the privilege of being here.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
I think the sales tax is an easier issue than the canopy tax, to me, anyway.
Can I chime in?
I chime in.
Who?
Who was that?
Who said they wanted to chime in?
That was me.
I think Justin.
Oh, Justin, oh, he's in the room, hang on.
The reason why, back in, you know, 2018 in the spring before this was put to the voters, the whole reason why this went with, we went with the canopy tax was to avoid what Mount Shasta was doing, they're actually doing it by the dry weight flower, they're, they're charging, I have their, their sheet here, and, hold on a second. Bring that back up, so they're actually having to go in and charge 30 cents per dry ounce. So rather than sit down and figure out those calculations and put that, the argument was made that it was, would be easier upon the grower and the city to just go by the canopy. So that's why we're not doing it the same way our neighboring city is by doing it by the dry ounce flower, and they actually have a wet material tax on top of that of 2 cents, but 30 cents per dry ounce flower.
Wow, that's a lot of math, yes, Kim?
That, just to go further, that goes, that goes for every crop, not just the one that's been proposed by our city. Every crop is being taxed at that point.
Right, well, everything, dead or alive? Kim?
Elizabeth was just gonna pull up that form that he was talking about and show it to you.
Oh, that Justin was just talking about?
Yeah, because Justin's correct, he has to realize, I don't see those pages because they don't apply to me, but in our meeting there, they do have dry weight, processed, there's a, there's a certain fee in there for people that do manufacturing of, whether it's concentrated, there's, or edibles. So, so Mount Shasta does have a breakdown, and there's a special sheet for each license holder that, that has that particular license, but now that Justin says that, he's right. I did recall on that second page that I always skip over, they're doing it by exactly what he said.
So does our proposal sound effective, law council members, what Sue just mentioned, 10, 10, 10 across the board, even though some of them not, may not be applicable now, but we're still matching what's, what comes in the official way. Tim, is that right?
I think it's way too high.
Yeah, we need three different cultivation, which you mentioned, and just a percentage on the gross receipts, correct?
I, I think it's a great place to start.
Can't we start off?
Did you want to speak? What, who else talking?
Mayor Travolero?
Who's speaking now?
Could we, could we look at something like two foreign...
Oh, Ray, turn all those other people off and talk, are you there? Okay, the other people are there. Okay.
And, and again, if, if, if we put this in place and pick a date, like you said, of July 1, and then six months, a year from now, you say this is not working, we need to change it, you are allowed to have that flexibility to change those rates.
Yes, I like that.
Ken, I'll only ask since you raised the questions, would you be applicable to that? We vote, because we know, we can vote yes or no, and majority wins, and we have, I think we heard from our business owners that perspective that it would hit them, we're not trying to put a hole in their pocket, but I know we all say that, we're trying to establish a sales tax, would that work for you?
So at 1.5, starting July 1, for, oh, it went away, for gross receipts and $10 across the board for canopy, and we revisit it, I say July 1 next year, but every year.
I think $10 is too much until we know where we're going. I, I mean, it's up to you guys, I mean...
That's the lowest of the scale, though.
As far as I'm concerned, we, we wanna, if this is gonna be an enterprise, then we need to cultivate the enterprise, no pun intended.
Or is, 10 is, 10 is the minimum the state set, right? Somebody, Justin, Kim?
I don't think the state set a minimum, that might be what they charge, but again, as we talked to the two business people that are present, we're, we're talking about a huge tax bill that they're paying already, and I, I get it, it's a sin tax, but Shane has, how, I think Shane has about 525 square feet. So at $10, that's 52, 5,250, easy math.
A year.
That's passed on to his consumer.
A year, that's a year.
I understand that.
Maybe we need to go $15.
No, I think we should go half of that, we wanna make sure that Shane is successful, then we'll hit him with a higher bill later, but to me, do you hit him with a higher bill now? Or do you wait till we grow our businesses?
So if we go the 10 bucks, it's 5,200 a year, we can't...
That sounds fair to me.
And we, and we have businesses who have been existing without this in place. Remember, I tried to push it six months ago, but we said no, I think it's reasonable and safe to do that. I think it's safe, I don't know why we're pushing this back or trying to...
Yes, Kim?
So, we just did the math, and that example you just gave would be $433 a month.
For who?
That, the, what Ken was estimating for Shane's square footage. But we just brought up the Mount Shasta fees and licenses, and it, it's really nice. I mean, we need to look at that, I think, because it...
Wait, Kim, we're not talking about fees and licenses.
No, I, it had that, and it has the tax on it, it's all their stuff on their website. So there are tax forms, it's, it talks about if it's dry, it talks about if it's wet, there's different fees for different, or different tax for different stuff, and it's pretty, it's spelled out pretty good. I think it'd be worth us reviewing it.
Well, no, Justin just said that, we didn't do that for that reason, because it's all nitpicky, that's why we did a flat, uh, we did a flat, square foot of canopy, and I remember that square foot of canopy discussion in those meetings that we had.
Hi, may I make a comment, please?
Who?
Hi, my name is John Strack, I live at 3038 Midhoff Lane.
Oh, Ray, you're back, okay.
Yeah, I apologize, I'm having some technical difficulty here. The rates that you guys are discussing for gross tax receipts are totally normal and within range. My hesitancy obviously lies in the canopy, square footage cultivation tax. Obviously Shane's cost for the project he's pursuing is pretty minimus, but when you apply it to the proposed development agreement, you're talking about an exorbitant amount of money. And it seems like my internet is not working.
That's business, that's...
No, we can hear you.
Business, that's sales, we can't look, we can't look at each company and be specific, I think we need to look generally and be favorable to all, that's how businesses operate, we wanna be favorable. I think our numbers are just right on.
I'm looking right now at Carson City, Carson City pays $25 for the square footage on the canopy in cultivation, and 18% of the gross.
No.
Yes, so I, I don't think we're being completely unreasonable with, with, what Councilmember Green pitched a few moments ago.
Yeah, at $10 a square foot?
Yes, I mean, there's...
How does Shane feel about that?
Who, what, Bob?
How does Shane feel about the $10 a square foot?
Well, we know he didn't like the 26, is he still there?
Well, I think, I think that, that sounds fair to me, the $10, but I don't...
So I, I did, I did some math, okay? 525 square feet, or let's go 500 square feet for easy math. 10 square feet produces prob, probably one plant with canopy. So that means you got 50 plants, 50 plants times 2 pounds a plant. I guess if you're a poor grower, you grow less than that, but 100 pounds, I don't really know what a pound of pot goes for anymore, but I would figure at least 800 based upon what they're doing. I don't, I don't, what does a pound of pot go for, Elizabeth?
$10 a square foot?
Uh, no, she said indoor, and indoor is about 2,500.
I'm the only one who doesn't towns, Elizabeth sells...
2,500 for a pound?
Just a second, let me do math, I'll tell you. She's doing math, too.
Everybody stop talking at the same time.
48 divided by 3.5, so 128, 128.
Who is, who's? Shane, go ahead.
Sorry, Ray, I could, but, um, yeah, so at 10, we have a little over 12 to 13 on the square foot, depending on our canopies, our canopy can change from time to time. $7 wouldn't be too bad actually to start propose, I know, like Salinas, like I'm down there quite often, that's where I started. They all pretty well failed that first, if it went to, you know, their local county, because the county had their tax and so did the city. And at some point, the county might want a tax for a month. I really think with this cultivation thing, we should slow down a little bit, we can implement the retail act. It's, or at least 7 is better than keeping around 7, it's just really hard at that, at that, really look at it on a new business perspective, we're trying to create, it's just really high.
Hey, hey, Shane, thank you, can I chime in for a moment? I'm really, sorry, I, I just wanna make it very clear, the audio is incredibly choppy. Several people who are watching cannot really tell what is going on, it is very hard to hear, the audio keeps going in and out. This is a very precise sort of measurement, and if, if we could, if we could defer for whatever the minimum amount of time is, so that we could review a couple of spreadsheets showing projections, that would be amazing.
I'm not for that.
No, I'm not for that either, um...
It's the consumer side on the, on the, on the concept of internet, that's on us.
I don't want it. Okay, yes, Justin?
So just going back to Councilmember Palfini's numbers, 100 pounds at 16 ounces a pound, 1,600 ounces at Mount Shasta's rate would be 0.30 cents per dry flower, that puts it at $480 for that. So that's, that's how much they're getting per crop based off a canopy, or based off a crop, they're, at their tax rate, they're getting, if he's saying 100 pounds per that crop, they're getting $480 based off their tax rate per crop.
Aren't you...
So if you have five crops, that's $2,000, translate it out, that's $4 per 10 square feet approximately. So it's, it's a little bit lighter, I mean, again, if it turns out that we're way off, we can increase it, but to start so high that we, we defeat Shane before he gets a good foothold, I don't know if that's, I mean, it's up to the council certainly, but...
Okay, so Shane's, Shane's already established, he's just in a new spot.
We're not established, we got our green tag Monday, our new building, we have not started. We had just got our first round, like, up and going, like, we haven't been able to pay any taxes because we still have to get a business license through you guys. Being that the retail changed, we have to reapply, so I'm working on that and working on getting that turned in, being there's nothing really open, I haven't been able to come turn that paperwork in. I will bring it in Monday and put it in the Dropbox if needed.
But Shane, you have a product that has been going through this cycle, it's almost at the point of completion, right? So you're ready to do some money, right?
Yeah, I, I am ready, but at, okay, we have, we have 1,300 square feet. So at 1,300 square feet, you're gonna charge me $13,000 a year, on top of the first year growth, if I have retail sale and I have nursery sale, so on top of the 13,000, you're gonna get a whole lot more. I mean, my business is gonna tax three different times, where everything else would be taxed once. I'm a microbusiness that holds four different operations. So we're taxed four to five different times from the state, and then how many times from the city, and then, you know...
One time.
But that's because of your business decision to decide what you want to go into business with, that's not our property, right? That's not our, it's not our concern, but I think we're being, guys, everyone, I think that we're looking at the points that our city manager mentioned, the averages, we're taking the lowest numbers of all those rates, isn't that the best way to go? Is it not? I don't understand the conversation that we're being selective and being too high or being too low. If that's what the average has been, based on reports that we're getting from other cities in the state, I think that, that's only a relative position to do, do the lowest that we can, that's reasonable. We, we can't look at each business and see what they will be doing, that, with their business decision to make that business, we can't be accountable for that, but I think we can be respective in what we charge for taxes since we haven't done it. Is, is, is that not the way to go?
No, that, that's, is reasonable, but what you're asking is for two small businesses in town, you're not asking me to have any other business at that rate, you're asking businesses to carry the weight of how many other.
But we do have the option to decrease it.
It is a unique situation, so like Ken mentioned, you know, only a handful of other businesses under California government code are singularly taxed, and, you know, using the example of Crystal Geyser, which makes millions and millions of dollars off of our town, they don't pay any taxes, they don't pay sales tax, they certainly don't pay a specific excise on square footage, or perhaps in their case, more applicably, volume taxation rates. I think that if you look at what's happening in towns who actually want to use this industry as a growth mechanism, then you're looking at taxation rates that are healthy to both the town and the business.
And Ray, Ray, I think these are healthy for us right now, at this point, based on the businesses, our environment and what's happening now, I believe that's healthy going at the lowest point that we can, and still being operable from a business sense to get your sales tax going, moving. Again, I said I wish we did it three years ago, but nobody want to, and I understand why, I'm the money guy, I know, but I'm trying to be respectful, and I think that's where we're at, you guys, can we just go a decision and see if we need to decrease it or increase it and keep moving on it? I think we're at that point, I respect, I'm respectful for the three businesses that are in place or going in place for your comments, and I believe we all hear that, I believe we are making a correct decision to go to that point that was suggested. Can we not do that and try it?
I'm really sorry, so I had terrible internet service, I'm a little about 15 minutes ago when I reset my router, so I'm not really sure what the rates that we're currently discussing are, I understand the range that's allowed by resolution, but could I get some clarification with that, please?
We can mention it.
The rate was 1.5% for the general tax of gross receipts, starting July 1, and, and then $10 per square foot of canopy for all three, starting July 1.
Okay, so, and I don't, Sue, I'm sorry, may I just chime in for a moment? That, that would mean that at the current projections on the documents submitted for development, we'd be looking at $4.4 million per year.
I hope so.
I, I certainly hope so, too, in year 3, 4, 5, 6, and onward and upward. But to look at that as a year one tax expenditure...
But on year one, on year one, Ray, are you gonna have every single solitary building built and all square foot?
No, of course not, but as per the discussion earlier, the rate is actually applied to the square footage of licensure issued, so the license dollars would be for how many permits were applied for and ostensibly granted, rather than the actual... And ostensibly granted, rather than the actual rate of production output, which would be more like what Justin was talking about with Mount Shasta's mall.
No, no, no. It's the cannabis cultivation tax per square foot of canopy. I can't.
Right, so per square foot of can- license issued, right? That's the underlying, and please, Tim, correct me if I'm wrong here, or Bob, I, I, my understanding is that when you have a square footage licensure, it's by virtue of having issued permits. And so you actually get taxed on the permits issued.
Mayor Tavallaro?
Hang on, Ken, I see you.
Product generator.
Jeremy keeps putting you up there. Um, hang, hang on a second, Ray, they're looking, Ken, what do you have, what are you gonna say?
Mayor, I would like to move that we table this action and get more input from staff, if I can get a second. We're, 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 we're making, trying to make decisions wi- without, trying to hash it out at a meeting level, when we should have more fundamental, uh, staff, uh, work on this.
What more, what more fundamental information do we need? We have what Tim mentioned, too, is which was numbers from the states that are participating in this tax. What, what other information do we need? Those are the industries and the companies that are involved. What more?
I would like to see more fundamental suggestions from staff as to the rates, why the rates, and where those numbers come from. If you say you have a statewide average, does that statewide average come from LA to, uh, Mount Shasta or weed, or does that state average just Northern California? What are we supposed to do? Uh, I'm not, if I'm in Los Angeles, I make a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year on average. If I'm in Siskiyou County, I make forty thousand dollars a year on average, if people are lucky. Uh, so to me, averages are good as long as they are locally derived. So that's where I come from.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I have to agree with you, myself, I, I'm totally, you know, we're, we're make, I'm making the decision here on, with just information I'm picking up tonight. And I, I really have no, uh, I, I, I'd like some more information, really would. I, you know, to look at this and, and, uh, discuss it, uh, to me, I, I, I went into this thinking, well, it was just kind of cut and dry, but no, you start looking at the different aspects of it, I think there were, I, I've gotta go along with, uh, I, I, I need some more information, I sure, I, I, I think I'd make a better decision, for sure.
All right, so it, hang on, hang on.
Also look at, well, let me finish, please. Also looking at the aspect that, I mean, for, you know, when we're talking about square footage and, and talking about getting businesses up and running, uh, it seems that we, we do need some type of graduation plan to, to, uh, get, get these businesses up and running. So that's my thought.
They need to get their applications in.
Yeah, okay, so it's gonna be three to one, if Bob says that. So I'll put it, it's been moved that we table this till next month, when we're all sitting inside here, and we can all look at the people I'm looking at, um, and.
Be nice.
So.
I will, I, 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 again, I'll follow my sword, and I will have, uh, abundant amount of information from staff.
Thank you.
For you, and, uh, on this particular thing, so.
Oh, Steve.
Thank you, Kim.
I know, tell them no. Um, okay, it's been moved and seconded to table this until month, next month, all in favor?
Aye. Aye, we don't need to take a vote.
I know, all opposed?
Well, we do need to take a vote, so it's on record, yes we do, and I disagree.
And I disagree also, but that's fine, so we'll be on next month's agenda, but we all need to be in this building next month.
Yes.
Uh, can, can we ask for a stakeholder meeting in regards to that agenda item next month, please?
A what meeting? I, I, I would be more apt if, if.
Stakeholder meeting to clarify some of the technology, technological difficulties we're having here.
You can call me, Ray, you can talk to me on the phone. I, I'm just saying right now, and, and, and I, I would highly encourage tonight, uh, those applications get turned in, too, by both the folks we're talking to tonight as well, so.
Okay.
We're, we're still awaiting those.
Okay.
Yes, you are.
All right. Table till next month, moving on to item B, fire department. Um, did he leave?
He's gone, so let's move on, table that, too.
Okay, the council will consider approval of request by Chief Duncan to submit for assistance to firefighter grant. Tim, are you gonna talk about it?
Sure.
It's not hard.
No, uh, he has, uh, requested a grant for the, it's the assistance firefighter grant, I believe, to replace our vehicle, uh, to replace our two thousand and eight Ford pickup, and it is, the grant total is for seventy-five thousand nine hundred and two, which includes twenty-three thousand dollars worth of also of confined space gear, and fifty-two thousand for the vehicle with a match from the city of a whopping thirty-six hundred dollars, so.
He's back.
I think Steve would say this is a good deal.
How effective is that grant? You know what I mean by grants?
So, yeah, like you said, this is just to write the grant, we won't know for a whole year, anyway, so. The grant actually closes tomorrow, so we've already submitted it.
Oh, with our approval?
With his approval. Uh, because it's due tomorrow, and then, I don't know who's on furlough, who's not.
I move to make a request that, that, uh, Chief Duncan make the request for the grant. I second.
Thank you, Ken, first, Bob, second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No, oh, look.
Great timing.
Fire truck.
I knew it was coming, I could hear it.
That was perfect timing, wasn't it?
He, that's why Tim was, okay. Um, moving on to the consent agenda, does, oh, item C, that's right. Um, do they all have this?
It went in the email this morning.
Oh, okay, so we need approval to submit this letter to the governor.
Do you want a motion?
Yes, would you like to make a motion?
I so move.
I'll second.
Thank you, it's been moved and seconded, Ken, did you have something to say?
I certainly did, if that's the letter regarding opening up for phase three, my question is, uh, I would say, are we ready? Uh, we don't have adequate testing in Siskiyou County, as far as I'm aware of.
They are testing everybody. My son had to refuse a test today, yesterday. No, they got two thousand tests, every single person at College of the Siskiyou is getting tested. I believe that they're testing all of the people that work at both hospitals, and anybody that is choosing to have surgery will get tested.
Okay, so we're talking about opening up salons, am I correct?
I hope so.
Barber shop spots? Not that a single, not that a barber shop in our town closed, but I mean, at least one that, that should have known better. Um, and that bothers me that, a couple of things that bother me about our small community, and maybe some of Siskiyou County, is that I walk into a grocery store, and, and the guy that's waiting on me, one particular grocery store, they don't have masks, the, uh, owner is being disrespectful to his workers, he's being disrespectful to his workers' families, and he's being disrespectful to the public. And he is not the only creature out there that's doing that, uh, there are others. So for me to feel warm and fuzzy about going to phase three, when we haven't even had compliance with phase zero, kind of bothers me, and I know we don't have much going on in Siskiyou County. I'm not sure if that's a fact, that Gov- Governor Newsom closed down a good portion of the county, um, and I do want our businesses back in place, so I'm, I'm torn with this.
Ken?
Ken?
Yes.
I asked the same question of Tim, and Tim, would you give the response when I asked about the multiple businesses doing different behaviors, and I, I liked his answer, I didn't hundred percent agree with it when he spoke it, but when I thought about it, it worked for me, maybe that would help.
It's America.
Well, we're talking about in, in the, the enforcement of it, and actually having, uh, the policing of the businesses, and going into the businesses, and at this point, as I stated to the council, uh, a few weeks ago, just pulling, um, other communities around here, it's, it's, it's a situation where if you see a business that is not in compliance, or a group of folks that are not in compliance, um, we are, you know, able to go up and, and explain to them that, um, that you are not in compliance. If you have a group of two hundred people that all of a sudden decide to meet at the park for something, I would expect, you know, Justin or somebody to go out and explain to them, uh, per, uh, the, uh, governor and the county's orders, uh, this is, this is not allowed. And so that's, that's kind of the direction we've taken, I don't know, Justin, I don't want to add anything else to that, but it's.
So this conversation is had almost daily within the police department and other agencies, um, from the beginning. Uh, the, the initial, uh, lockdown, uh, came under question from, uh, an attorney from, uh, Jones and Mayer, who's a Bay Area, uh, group that represents, often represents the police chiefs, the Sheriff's Association, and, and the California Peace Officers Association. During a webinar, one of their associates gave the opinion that, uh, yeah, we do have this health and safety code that's been recently, uh, introduced to everybody, not, it's been on record, but it's pretty obscure and untested in the court. And they were of the opinion that, uh, going out and particularly to essential businesses, you know, based off of nothing other than somebody saying, you're essential, and, and you're not enforcing that. There was some, some concerns over that. Uh, moving forward, I've had this discussion with, uh, a couple other cities, uh, one mayor, uh, I did have an exchange with, and they were kind of upset with their, and without the enforcement throughout the county. And at that time, I, uh, expressed the opinion that, uh, we needed guidance from the DA's office. The DA's office gave us limited guidance, stating that they would look on a, uh, an enforcement issue, case by case. Um, and, but I did point out to that, uh, official from the other city, that, you know, we do have a already backlog to court system, and each one of those violations is a potential jury trial. And just today, uh, the Shasta County has, uh, dismissed sixty-five hundred misdemeanor cases, because the courts are so backlog prior to this, and now, once they reopen, they're gonna be backlog again. Um, and then, from an officer's point of view, we just discussed this last night at a squad meeting, our officers have concerns, as do I, I don't want to be giving somebody a, you know, I took an oath to uphold the constitution, and I don't have clear guidance on whether these are constitutionally viable orders. Um, I know the governor says they are, but it's a First Amendment, it's a Fourth Amendment, and it's a Fourteenth Amendment, uh, concern to me. So we will warn people, we will advise people, but as far as going out and taking, you know, I don't want to reach the point where we're, uh, where I see officers back east, where they're physically going hands-on with people over not wearing a mask.
And that, I, I, I'm in agreement, probably a little bit with both, that's fine. Uh, they're doing things that they're not supposed to be doing already, uh, out of just sheer being a grown-up, in my, my opinion, but that, that's, there, everybody makes that choice. Where I shop, I make that choice as well, and I, I can tell you, I won't tell you where I shop, but, uh, I, you, you can probably guess where I don't shop. Um, uh, if the governor opens up the state, whi- which he's probably gonna do anyway, I don't think we're, by the time our letter gets to Sacramento, we're actually gonna get any comp- anything accomplished, but I, I think the governor will be opening up just about as, the same time as everybody else is fed up with this, uh, stay indoors thing, I get it. Uh, my wife tells me I need to go to work, I understand completely, but, um, I also don't want to encourage people's unsafe practices that could influence how I, my health is. So anyway, that's all I'll say.
Okay.
If you guys want to sign the letter, you sign the letter, you can sign it without me, I can't sign it.
I'd like to add some, I, myself, I, uh, I keep, can you hear me, first of all?
Yes.
Okay, uh, I, myself, I would like to see some direction, not necessarily direction, but what, how we, uh, it, it seems that we have half of our, well, in our area, we have a good part of our population thinks that this is a hoax. And, uh, uh, they're reacting, you know, in, in that manner. And myself, I, I have, uh, some medical background, and when you were talking about a virus, uh, that, which is a thousand times smaller than a bacteria, and the way that it spreads, and we're expecting the, the, uh, the, the professionals or the scientists are telling us that in, uh, this fall, we're gonna have another, uh, another episode, there's a good chance of having another, uh, flare-up, or they could even be worse than the first one. I'd like to see us, uh, uh, start thinking about what is safe. You know, I wear a mask when I go out, I wear that mask for the people around me. And I don't, I think a lot of people look at me like, oh, hell, you're wearing a mask, but you're afraid of me. No, I'm wearing a mask for you. And I think it's important for, as a, as a community, that we have, you know, and, and it's not a standard, but I mean, what is acceptable? You know, where are we going with this? Are we, are we prepared for the next wave of this? And right now, I, I did, there's nothing but chaos and mixed messages coming. But I think for our, safety of our community, I think it's important that we, uh, uh, that, that, that we establish what is safe. I mean, so should we encourage people to wear masks? Or if not, is, is it a free-for-all, and, and if it is, if, if we're gonna say that, hey, we're gonna, we're going to just allow it to run its course, and the chips fall where they may. If we're gonna do that, I think it's very important for people to state that. I, I think it's important that, that, you know, that you, if you, if you feel that, myself, I feel, I think there are precautions that, that we can take, and we should, and a responsibility. When we look at the other country, we look at China and, and South Korea, you know, we talk about testing or whatever, but the most important thing is, they put on a mask.
They, yes, they've been wearing masks for years.
Exactly, that's how they, that's how they stop it.
But I don't think it's gonna matter.
Hold on, there's a motion on the floor, so just go through the motion, then we can decide. If there's questions, we went through the questions section with all of us.
Right.
Let's move forward with the motion.
So it's been moved and seconded to approve signing this letter, all in favor? Aye. Aye. Any opposed?
I oppose, because we're not talking about anything in the future, I oppose it, yes, I do.
Ken? Ken, you're muted. Well, it was three to.
Yeah, I, that's fair. I don't know what happened to Ken.
Okay, it was three to, do we need to know exactly?
Ken, your vote, was it yes or no?
No.
No, okay, he said no, so it's three to two.
All right, great. Uh, it's been moved and seconded to sign the letter, mail it, and we're moving on to the consent agenda. Does anybody want to take anything off the consent agenda? Kim and Ken, you're, you guys are muted, did they do it themselves, Jeremy?
Yeah, it, doing it automatically on mine, I don't know what happens.
Okay. There we are, Ken.
There, okay.
Uh, are we good with the consent agenda, we don't need to remove anything?
I'll move that we, uh, approve the consent agenda.
I second it.
It's been moved by Kim and seconded by Stacy to approve the consent agenda, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, staff report. Bob? Justin?
I just wanted to state that we're, uh, working on a rabies vaccination clinic, since the county ones were closed. Uh, we've been in contact with, uh, the support services manager, and CSOs have been in contact with the veterinarian, to hopefully be able to provide that to the community at a relatively low cost. Uh, we're, we're anticipating probably ten dollars per animal.
Cool. That's great news, a rabies vaccination clinic?
When?
Do, he doesn't know yet.
We're, we're shooting for probably the, around, uh, the eleventh of June. We don't have the date set, we're just, we, we needed to work out the logistics where we'll have it. We'll probably need some volunteers to help with it, um, but it won't be through the county as normal, this will be, uh, provided by, uh, an area vet.
Okay, one of the parks, possibly?
Uh, we were thinking either the parks, or possibly out here in the plaza, uh, depending on, you know, weather and logistics.
Yeah, there's parking out here, too, yeah, good, that's great news. Um, Emily?
You can have it, you can have it here, uh, Justin, if you want.
Yeah, that was during the discussions, I, I rec, you know, I put that out as a possible location as well.
Emily has nothing. John, he's all done. John, he's all done. Craig?
Yes.
Oh, Craig has something. He would like to stand up to the microphone and say something. Use Justin's microphone.
I just want to let you know that the Vista Drive is gonna go out to bid this Friday.
Tomorrow?
Yes, and we'll have 30 days till we open bids and then we'll have to go to EDA for more money. But it looks like they're all on board. Everything looks good.
Didn't EDA already say yes to the money? Oh, even more? Okay, good.
Question, Craig. We, we were, there was some talk about we were going to do some work on North Davis. Is that on hold?
Stop it.
Nope.
No, it is not on hold.
Good, good. When do you think that'll start?
We need to get out to bid here pretty quick because we have to have the money spent by the end of August.
May I ask about Lincoln Avenue?
Oh, good, good. Other, other question on the, the, on, I guess it's, it's Davis, North Davis is the, there, there's, we've got some road work that's been, hasn't been completed there. Do you know when they're coming back?
The plan was to come back this week, but the weather's not cooperating because they've got all asphalt from Reading, so as soon as it warms up, they'll be back.
Perfect, thank you.
Craig, when is, when is Lincoln Avenue?
Yeah, we start the environmental in '21.
Which is next year.
Next year.
And then the approximate is after that, like that another two years?
Uh, we just, right now, all we have is funding for environmental work, so we'll have to go back and it depends on how much STIP money is available.
Okay.
Steve? No? Nothing? Sandy? Tim?
I would just like to say, it's been last couple of months, although.
Poor Tim? Did you have something to say?
Living in a camper is not what it's all hyped up to be. But I officially am now a homeowner here in Siskiyou County. And we will be moving in probably the middle of June, but I'm going to take possession of the home this weekend, so, yeah, I'm very much.
Moving the trailer?
Moving my trailer to, and I'll be sleeping on a floor. I'd rather sleep on a floor in a house than in a trailer, so. Anyway, but I'm just excited because that means the next step is moving my wife and her grandmother and my wife's petting zoo will be here as well. And we're, we're really excited to, to get that, that part of this journey completed. And like I said, really, really happy.
Good.
Mr. Mayor, I have one thing I mentioned that people have asked me. I saw the decision about the carnival to be held, but there's some concern on the numbers there. So I just want to know that that is a concern based on, as we were stating, that there's nothing coming from the governor or this, or the county that talks about restrictions. But our current numbers in environment talks about people in place and I think the carnival will do that. So that's just a concern that people have had. I don't know what anyone else has received, but I want to mention that so it's on record.
Yeah, just remind people that the Carnival is in July. And that committee knows that.
There's still yourself concerns. I just want to mention so it's on record. I've done my job.
Okay.
Okay, so Sue, on that note, we need to change the date.
I saw that. I'll put it on, I'll put it on next month's agenda.
Okay.
I wrote it down.
What are the dates changed to?
The July meeting gets, needs to get changed because it'll be on Carnival weekend.
Okay.
Like it is every year. July 13, 11.
Eight, eight through 12. July 8 through 12. And that Thursday is Junibarachay Day.
Right. Okay, who adjourns?
I'll make a motion if you adjourn.
Ma, Mr. Mayor, may I ask one thing here? I just came from a community resource center meeting and we haven't been able to have many fundraisers. So I will put out to the public that is listening and to my fellow council members, if you don't have a necessary need for your $1,200, whatever money that was called, coronavirus money, we'd be willing to take a donation of a small amount.
Okay.
So I just thought I'd throw that.
Okay. Bob adjourned, does anybody second it? Oh, Kim?
I'll second.
Who? Ken? Okay.
I'll second, yeah.
It's been moved and seconded, we're out of here.
Bye, guys.